Testing. Good evening. Today is Monday, December 20th. This is our regular school board meeting. The time is 6:10. I appreciate your patience. Board members present include members Wilson, Lessons, Jacobs, Holloman, Higgins, Donley, and Bellamy. And if you will stand and join me in the pledge, please.
My quiet allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Shaw?
Before we begin, I would like to acknowledge with gratitude the Dinai people, past and present, who have lived on these lands since long before Anchorage was here. May we all be good stewards of these lands. Chinon.
Thank you. We want to welcome you to our meeting, and we want to thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and this board. The board thanks students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district by investing your time, your talents, and your tax dollars. And so that brings us to our approval of the agenda.
President, I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Through second?
Second.
We move in second to approve the agenda as presented. Any opposition? Seeing none, the agenda stands approved as presented. And that brings us to item B, our Student Advisory Board Report. Ms. Shaw?
Okay, so SAB, or Student Advisory Board, had their fourth meeting of the school year on December 7th at 11:15 a.m. in this boardroom. Our attire for the meeting with school spirits was so fun to see everyone decked out in their school colors. We started the meeting with a super exciting kahoot and then approved our agenda and the minutes from our previous November meeting. Then I shared the school board report. Students from each school, middle school and high school, shared one thing that they're working on or have already accomplished that they were proud of. Dr. Johnson came in and gave us updates about the SROs because we had Chugiak High School submitted a resolution about the SROs, so we wanted to, you know, let them know how it was going and what was discussed at the joint assembly and school board meeting. And then finally, President Bellamy came in and spoke to everyone, which was really awesome to have her come in there. We are so grateful. She invited two SAB members to join the ASD Superintendent Search Committee where Joshua Pack and myself were chosen. After our break, we mixed the high schoolers and middle schoolers together and gave them topics to discuss, like what spirit days and assemblies look like in their own schools, who organizes events, and, you know, if it's not their student government, what does their student government do in their school, and what kind of community service projects do they do throughout the year. We then closed our meeting, which to me was personally our best one yet. It was really fun and well organized. Sorry, I lost my spot. Everyone was just really excited to be there and walking around, hearing everyone's discussions about what they do was super interesting to see how everyone does differently from South, where I go to school. So yeah, our next, our E-Board is meeting on January 5th to plan the next January meeting, and the SAB January meeting is on January 11th, 2022, at 8:15 a.m. to 10:15 a.m. in this boardroom, and our attire will be professional wear.
Thank you very much, Ms. Shaw. Are there any questions for our SAB rep? Right, great report, thank you. And that was an awesome meeting that you presided over, and I will come back to visit again, although I was covering for Mr. Jacobs that day. He might not let me come back. He enjoys it as well. Okay. All right, so that brings us to item C, which is our goal monitoring. And we are looking at, this is, we are going to have our progress monitoring conversation. Tonight's conversation is on Goal Three, which is college career life readiness, specifically looking at indicator, the indicator of Algebra II completion rate. And that indicator really requires that at least our challenge is for the percentage of grades, of grade nine through 12 students, specifically completing Algebra II with an A, B, or C, will increase from 30% in spring 2021 to 34% in spring 2022. I'd like to confirm that all four components of the report are present. The report clearly shows what is being monitored. Now, we received the report last time, so members of the public, you can access it online right now if you'd like. It also shows that the data for the three previous reporting periods, the current reporting period, and our target reporting period. The report shows the superintendent's evaluation of performance and shows supporting documentation that evidences the superintendent's evaluation via tables, the tables that are provided, and it includes next steps. With all these components present, we will begin our conversation. The first part will be, of course, to dig into the data itself, what it's telling us about the reality of where our students are today. The second part of the report will be the conversation having to do with how do we move forward. All right, so again, if we can clump our questions, and some of you have sent in questions, I appreciate that. But if questions come up tonight, please ask them. So now we're going to open up the floor for questions regarding the who, the what, and the why of the data that you see in the report. And once we're done with that, we'll go to the how questions. So, who has a question for the superintendent? Member Lessons?
Sure, I'll be glad to start us off. I appreciated the chance again to look at the information. I was perplexed that the interim goal has to do with increasing Algebra II completion this year, but we don't have an understanding of who is enrolled this year. We have last year's data as a baseline, but who are we talking about this year?
Sure, so that's a great question. So the ASD students enrolled are seventh through twelfth graders, possibly to be enrolled in Algebra II, and they would be any student previously successful in Algebra I and Geometry as their prerequisites. There are 1,798 students scheduled in Algebra II courses right now as of semester one, and the majority of them, 72% of them, are in grades 10 and 11. The enrollment data actually mirrors, it's not statistically significant a difference, it pretty much mirrors the enrollment of last year, except for that it's lower in overall numbers because our district's enrollment as well as overall numbers. So our percentages are mirroring what's on here.
Okay. So I have a little follow-up to that question.
And might I ask that we're looking to increase, this is really pulling, because we didn't get much work on this, so this is a baseline year? So we will look at this as a baseline year to move forward?
Yeah, okay, all right. So that answer is part of my question. So, the students who are, I'm just curious, the students who are not taking, what are the students taking who are not taking Algebra II? I know the reason we're doing Algebra II is because that's an indicator of success in college. And so this discussion is around college readiness, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And so for the students who are not in this, what are they taking? Who's missing from this group?
Sure, so I did receive that question, but we didn't have time to run the statistics on the specific courses. But if you're, we have lots of courses that are not Algebra II, and again, Algebra II is specifically evidence-based as being college-ready, that when a child in high school finishes Algebra I and Algebra II successfully, they generally do not need remedial courses when they are freshmen in college. And that's why this is specifically to college readiness, that students that want to go to college. But we can get, we have lots and lots of courses that kids are taking instead of Algebra II. Some are Algebra II-like, but for the workforce and work, you know, if they want to get a certificate, it might be a like Algebra II course, but very ingrained in, say, engineering, things like that, building. So it isn't that it's a, some of them are not lesser classes or easier classes, they're just different classes for their outcomes. But we can provide the board all the math classes that kids are taking in high school, if you'd like.
Yeah, I would be interested to see that information, and it can go in board, can that?
Sure.
Because my other question really has to do with, what are we doing to attract and steer kids into Algebra II? I mean, they're not going, I mean, you know, I think in middle school, if our goal is to, if I, in five years, we want to see kids graduating, more kids graduating that have completed Algebra II successfully, then we got to be doing something, and that might be a how question later on. Maybe I'm jumping ahead, so I'll hold it till later.
Sure.
Unless you just want to answer.
No, I'm joking. I mean, Algebra II's completion and having success in Algebra II does not start with Algebra I, nor does it start with geometry. It is really way back in the board's goals for actually math and having those skills and moving forward. But we are working with equal opportunity schools in regard to identifying students to take higher level and increase the rigor of all classes for kids. That's one of the things, if you look at research in regard to the United States, not just Alaska, but overall, that our expectations for math are very low for our students in the United States. So increasing the rigor and supporting kids to learn and put in that hard work.
Okay. Member Lessons, do you have another question? I'm not seeing, oh, I'm sorry. Member Wilson?
I'm looking at the graph, and obviously, my assumption is that the pandemic, the lack of in-person learning for that period of time is what caused the decrease in percentages of students that completed Algebra II. Is that a correct assessment? And what do you think the moving forward progression, what do you, what would you hope to see the progression to be, to get back to where we were several years ago with the 42% completion rate?
Sure, that's a great question, and I would assume the same thing, that it dramatically dropped to 38% completion, because there were additional students enrolled, and that end of that year was very difficult for them. So perhaps a full year wasn't completed, they might have just had one semester. Really targeting again to build capacity around ability to take it. There's some learning that we missed by being home, that's really obvious now in all the literature. Specifically speaking, our middle school math new program has increased the rigor for kids. And so to have more kids able to take those higher-level courses or just to challenge them, and many times, it's not really about the skills. What we're finding out with the equal opportunity schools is that a lot of kids, when they sign up for high school, they just kind of don't really have a picture of what do I need to do now for my future? So it's proper counseling, it's wrapping around those supports. But hopefully, if we get to four more percent and then double that another 4%, if not, not, yeah, so get up to eight and continue to grow. In life, though, because this isn't just a college readiness, this is college career and life-ready, and research behind what is needed is that something beyond the high school is needed, but it doesn't necessarily have to be college. Research demonstrates for every doctorate degree that our world needs, they need two bachelors or advanced masters, and seven skilled people. So that doesn't mean just high school, that means some work out of high school, that is a skilled labor, and then college. And so especially in Alaska, we want to be prepared for career as well. So sorry, I keep going off on that, because it's super important that this isn't, the goal isn't to push all kids to college, it is to be sure that those that do go to college don't have to take remedial classes.
Right. Yes.
Follow-up? I do have a follow-up, and I appreciate the superintendent talking about the need for so many different fields, not just the direct college track. Can you tell me how the seventh and eighth grade students access Algebra II?
Sure, I would have to, we do have a few students in Algebra II, but they would primarily access it online, or I can have Kirsten Johnson come up, but not a large amount access Algebra II in middle school. That would be very rare. We do have Algebra I in middle school and Geometry, but how many students would you say offhand in the district, Kirsten, access Algebra II? And we do have online blended, zero hour, lots of, basically, if they're accessing Algebra II, they're generally under a plan through Gifted Ed to, and we wrap around that and plan for that.
Yeah, through the president, to member Wilson, there are very few students at the middle school level that do access Algebra II. It's usually about 50 or less each year. Most of them are in the highly gifted program at Romig Middle School, and so there's a partnership between West High School and Romig to offer classes taught by a West High School teacher who's, you know, certified to teach a higher level of math that teaches that section for the students at Romig. For students that don't have that, you know, neighboring school with a connecting hallway and all of that, we do find other ways to get that Algebra II access. When I was the principal at South High School, we often had some middle schoolers at a first-period Algebra II class where they were able to come to South and take that course and then go to Goldenview for the rest of the day. So it just depends on me here.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you. Member Lessons?
Sure, so I enjoyed, again, the opportunity to look at who was enrolled last year and was really struck by how over-enrolled or economically, excuse me, how under-enrolled are economically disadvantaged students are compared to our not-economically disadvantaged students. And I wonder, this is more of a how, when you think about getting more students on that trajectory, what are some key steps that you think need to be taken to introduce the concept of this pipeline, communicate with parents? What are some of the things that are maybe current obstacles that need to be overcome to diminish that discrepancy between who is enrolled?
Sure, that is a great question, and that's true, and that's our goal, is to ensure that all students can find success in the Anchorage School District. And consequently, I've been doing some personal reading on, in a book called The Smartest Kids in the World, and what happens with them. And one of the issues is, we do know that poverty, I mean, it's the reason for Title One, that there are some headwinds, that we call it, that come against some students, whether, just where they're born. And a lot of times, our focus with our title is to take care of those affective things that are headwinds. And my belief and through the research is that exactly what you said, they have to have access to rigorous curriculum and high expectations, no matter what your background is. So that mindset, they found in the research, was above all what was most important. And hence, we like to, and we do, we need to take care of kids, we work on SEL, we are one of the best countries, and really, I would say, the best school districts in working on social-emotional learning. But if we do that in the place of expectations and rigor, then we're going to always be in this place. So we need to, what I say, love them up, love up our kids, but also hold them accountable. Be kind, but be stern, be fun, but be stern, and let our young people know that they can learn in our system. So truly, in the research, it's about expectations, actually, and rigor.
That brings up, kind of leads into one of my questions, you know, like in deter, what are the factors involved in math placement? Like who, I know there's teacher discretion, I know we use the student data, the students' assessment data. What are the pieces in that? It seems to me that we, I don't want to use the word track, because we're not doing that, but somebody somewhere along the way decides who goes left and who goes right. And what does that look like for math?
That looks like what a kid can know and be able to do, and it's about having those access skills. I mean, really, member Lessons brought it up in early on about, these are the skills that our kids need, and we have excellent teachers, and our teachers, you know, teach, 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 and it's hard. It's hard teaching kids that need a lot. So we just, you know, working through our system to figure out, how can we take advantage? And really, from the youngest of age, ensure that by the time they leave third grade, they have everything they need in third grade, so they'll be successful in fourth. Because when we move them beyond without really recouping some of that when they're young, it catches up with them. We do use, we started moving from strictly recommendation-based for some of these courses to utilizing data first and capturing kids, and that's part of equal opportunity schools. We catch a lot of kids in high school that actually, they do have the skills, they have the aptitude, they just don't know about it. So part of it is using our data to screen through MAP about kids' learning and their growth, and then really counselors and teachers talking to kids and parents, as was mentioned before, you know, your child really should take this class. I want to say that many teachers do recommend things where they see kids, and sometimes kids would rather get an A than maybe take a better class. So I want to say that that's the reality of what we're dealing with, that when we look for, I just want this grade. I mean, there's lots and lots of different factors. But I think the biggest thing that we can do is to really impact, you know, we need to impact kids' learning and impact the kids and share with them what math is going to do for them. I think math is a key feature in their future, in their future success. So we do move kids in the semester, it was shared, that if they are being successful and can move to a higher grade, we will do that to help them. We have schools now that really, if kids even on their assessment fall a little bit below, I was visiting with a middle school principal, and she just said, you know what, if parents come to me and say, no, I want Algebra by eighth grade, because I do see that that's the trajectory, to get them into classes in high school, but they don't quite have the skills, they'll help them get the skills and move them in, because anybody, a kid and a parent, an ally, that will say, hey, let's do this, we can do this, they do it. So those tracks, if you will, are set early on, and we've talked about that before, and that's why you're, the board really focused on those early access skills. If our kids leave elementary school without really having automaticity in a lot of those skills that we should have, cognitively, it's difficult. And I'm, again, trying to figure out what six times seven is. As a seventh grader, I'm not thinking about algebra. My brain doesn't have the cognitive ability to think higher level. I need to have those automatic skills, and it's tough, because our kids come to us with many, many different levels. And so working together as a school, using some blended learning catch-up tools, you'll see with iReady that part of a student's day is to work on iReady, because it's directly focused on what they need. And sometimes it's higher than what's being taught in the class, sometimes it's some remediation.
Okay. Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam President. Question, I guess, regarding the economically disadvantaged students and upping that percentage. What I think I'm hearing is that transportation isn't an issue with, maybe an eye towards budget development. That transportation isn't an issue in increasing that percentage, whether it be through partnerships like Western Romig or online resources. Is that something we need to address? And that 1,800 students that are taking a class now, I mean, are we leaving, are there open spots in classrooms where that number could be higher?
That's great, yes. The number could always be higher for a math teacher here, absolutely. Put them in math. So we can handle more kids. Our teachers teach what kids need to learn, and when kids need to move higher, I'm hoping that we're going to need more calculus classes in future years, because we're going to have more calculus kids and being ready. So right now, you know, when we hear of a lack of access, we really do, we wrap around and say, okay, how can we make this happen for a child? Whether it's a co-location, a blended course, many times, we have some kids in online in their school, and their teacher is actually teaching it with the online, or another teacher is teaching it with online. So we piece things together, but I wouldn't say we have, you know, to make this up, we don't have people knocking down doors because it's not accessible because of transportation. I would say if it's most inaccessible for the learning, and that's why that middle school math really, when they did the curriculum review, they really kind of turned it on its head and jumped up some of the skills. And middle school math is a little bit more difficult than it used to be in the past, but our kids can achieve when we have the expectations there. Just like on a ball field, if you expect a certain level of play, if you will, you know, kids generally match it. But as we work with schools and the resources they need to have, make adjustments during the day, to have reteaching before school, after-school tutoring, things like that, those are the types of prudent inputs that I think we should have, which I believe that part of the ARA, or what is the newest one, ARP, plan is, there was reserved money for that, not only for summer schools, but also before and after school. It's been difficult right now to do those, because our staff, our teachers are just wiped from the everyday job, you know, but as soon as we can identify where those needs are, those funds are there.
So I'll follow up with the, actually, so on page nine, where we list out all the defined school types, all, excuse me, all of these schools offer Algebra II. Is that, is that correct?
Madam President, we can have students at any school take an Algebra II class. I'll have to check on how avail, what the availability is in all of these schools of Algebra II. But if a child needs Algebra II independently, we can find a class, a blended class, online class. Many of, like, say, for instance, math teachers there have students, there might be a math teacher, and the students are taking three or four different math courses. So I'd have to look into that specifically.
So as our students, the only follow-up is, is just that, as our students move from school to school, they will, they will have an opportunity to take, well, whatever, whatever level math, but I'm specifically interested in Algebra II.
We want for that to happen, so I'll take a look at that, but that is the main goal. And we have a study that was just finished through Dr. Aix, and we are going to share with the board in January, that consequently, the more that students move in our district, you can just stair-step down their achievement. The more schools kids have on their transcript, the less amount that they are achieving in everything. And hence, the need that if you have high mobility, you have to have standards and an instructional expectation of, we will all get this far by this time, and that's almost a no-no in, you know, speaking about freedom, right? And so, really, and it's not just in Anchorage School District, it's literally everywhere in the United States, that we really have to come around, there's a study called the McKinsey Study, I encourage you, we really have to come around, what are the ideas about, what are we tight on, which should be the expectations for kids, and then what are we loose on? You know, and that tight and looseness with teaching in our schools allows the freedom needed by educators to engage with their kids, but also an idea that, don't take your side off, that is the goal, that if we all keep that goal in mind. And so we'll present that to you, Madam President, but you brought up a very good point, that ASD has very high mobility, over 40%. So 40% of our schools are turning over and going to another school, and that's why we're talking about, if we really want to achieve as a district and not just individual schools... and not just individual schools, we're going to have to keep a sight on that about how many kids. This movement actually outweighed poverty in the kids and what they know. So it was right up there with being less, you know, less advantaged. You could say rich kids did not do well either.
When they moved.
When they moved. Without some type of, that's why alignment in the district is something that we can control because we don't really have influence on students moving. Their parents have that influence. So we should look at what we can influence and where we stand. But Dr. Stock and Dr. Aix have that for you in January. It was just intriguing to us. It was a kind of a sidebar assessment, but you hit the nail on the head right there.
Okay. Before I ask another question, all right, Kelly, I'll volley back to you.
So we're talking about this interim goal for this year to increase to about 34% this coming spring. I don't think I've seen, you know, your sense of where we are with that target. And my understanding is that we can either do better with our students or over the long term, we can expand that pool. And I'd be curious about your assessment of where we are right now with these, you know, 1,800 students in Algebra II. Are they, are we on track to meet this interim goal? With how well they've done this semester?
That was good. Thank you for sending in your question before that. But we, before, so we were able to pull these data. And so the majority are 72%, 72% of the kids are 10th and 11th graders. We did find out there were only, by the time when we pulled these data, the last day of school, grades weren't given. Only 98 grades were in the computer thus far out of the almost 1,800. And 87% of the kids taking it were on track, you know, for Algebra II. We did just by chance look at Algebra I and we have about 60% of kids in our district in ninth through 12th grade take Algebra I, like right now, took Algebra I and passed it with an A, B, or C. So we're just taking a look at these, but without further information and grades being inputted. And our teachers have that because a lot of kids who travel come back and do their exams. They, we have some time after the new year to input grades. So I'll find out and to be continued because we, when we looked at that, we just didn't have enough data to make an assessment. But it's in line with what it was previously. So we'll see, we'll see. But only less than 100 out of 1,800, we couldn't make a good guess.
I'm just curious, and I know, I think I know the answer because you cited some research. Why did we start with Algebra II and not start tracking with Algebra I?
Sure.
And I know that there's, and I think you might have even answered this earlier, but I still need some clarity.
Yeah, no worries. So there is research on getting ready for college, not to do remediation. And so we have, and even through our middle college, we've learned about this. And students that take Algebra I and Algebra II do not need remediation in college. And so this was a particular interim goal because the college career life readiness, I think Dr. Johnson and her team could have picked, you know, 15 different interim goals. But we said, you know, they said, no, you can only have a few, you know, to really do them well. So this was the one for college readiness. Because one indicator, one class that a child could do well in in high school. And, and so this study studied all high school freshmen. And freshmen who did not fail and can went to the second semester and then finished their freshman year in college all had one thing in common in the United States. They successfully passed. The one class in high school that mattered the most was Algebra II. Now, member lessons brought up something last time that talked about when you want to know your final goal, you have to plan backwards to get there. And that's exactly right. We are, we have to improve Algebra I rates. We, then we have to improve what's happening in sixth grade and fifth grade and getting kids out. So again, graduation day, you know, might be when a senior walks across the stage, but their success is matriculation, you know, all the way through our system. And so we are keeping a keen eye on Algebra I because essentially you can't increase Algebra II without having kids ready for it. And so then we also have to watch geometry because those two are prereqs for Algebra II. But specifically speaking, redefining ready research in regard to college success of kids. And you've probably heard it, I think our high school teachers and every teacher is like, oh, you know, college, they don't prepare them, these kids are failing. And then, you know, high school teachers will be like, it's the middle school, they're not preparing them in middle school. It says elementary school, you know, and then it's preschool. I mean, we just, we need to come around this and say, okay, this is where the buck's going to stop. We're going to do our best. And we know Algebra II by research. If kids successfully complete it, they do not need, generally do not need remediation in college. So that saves moms and dads money and kids money too.
And kind of along with that, I just wonder, I noticed that Algebra I, Algebra II, and geometry are on the curriculum calendar for review next year. So how does, how is the work different with the CCL goal than it is for the curriculum review work? Or is that, do they work together?
As of the board adopting goals, we are working with them together. So the work that they're doing on the math through K through nine, this actually just built on it. And so the teaching and learning department have all of their experts on some of these teams. You know, they're made up of lots of different people, teachers, counselors, principals. But teaching and learning probably has people on almost all of these goals because they keep that connection with the work. And so I do want to let the board know that when you had a goal, we took it as, okay, this is our new, this is what we need to do. This is, you know, the path forward. And we're working on integration of what we need to do to meet these.
Okay, so, all right, so it's not separate work?
No, we want, it has previously been separate work, but the goal is to have them be collaborative.
All right, thank you. So Kelly, shall we move to the how questions? Anybody else have any who, what, why? Okay. So I think you've already answered one of mine, that the systemic alignment of Algebra II course selections throughout the district. And we're working to, on that. So that as kids move, they can expect the same experience and the same opportunity. All right. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you, you guys.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop.
No, this was fun. It's always fun to talk about math. I think some people don't like it, but it is the greatest course ever.
You know, the only other thing, I just think that when we look at, it is the, one of the really fun pieces of this report for me is really looking on, you know, page six, seven, and I think eight, or six and seven, where it's just laid out, the stages of implementation, the work to be done, the action steps to be taken. So I do, I like seeing that. And because that really does provide the path forward. I think that's a very important part of the report.
Thank you.
So thank you.
And might I add one thing? As I was doing my research just in math and, and what, they studied the PISA scores, the Program of International Student Assessment. And what all the kids in the smartest countries in the world have are pre-K. That's one of the common.
Pre-K, one of the, I can believe it.
I thought that would be fun since you had talked about that previously.
Yeah, I agree. And I, you know, so in terms of moving forward, I don't know what other help or resource you need from the board, but we expect that that would be, you know, part of the future reports as you continue to guide the work. Thank you, guys. I appreciate that. And at this point, I'd like to, is this right? What is next on my agenda? I keep forgetting that at the end of our monitoring report, we need to accept the report. So I'll take, take a motion.
No, for the move, we accept the superintendent's progress monitoring report.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved in second to accept the report. Any opposition to accepting the report? Not seeing any. The report is accepted. Thank you. Now that brings us to our, our public comment piece. That's item D. So we'd like to welcome everyone to our public comment section on our agenda. The board has set aside one hour at the beginning of the meeting for public comment. Comment in excess of one hour will be allocated to the end of the meeting. During public comment, board members will not answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is the public's time to speak and the board's time to listen. The school board welcomes the public to observe and contribute to our meetings through testimony. But to be productive, our meetings must be structured and civil. As you came in, you would have seen a copy of our decorum and audience participation. It's a blue and white sheet like this. We conduct our public meetings under Robert's Rules of Order. And that's a set of rules for orderly meetings that have been used since the late 1800s. These rules require the board and the public to be civil and respectful of each other's opinion and statements. And so here are a few requirements I'd like to review under Robert's Rules. Do not attack a member's or speaker's motives. Speakers may point out what he or she believes to be a natural consequence of a board action, but may not engage in speech that personally attacks others. We ask that you refrain from disturbing the meeting. And that means no cheering, applause, or outbursts. Unless you are testifying, you must be polite to the board and other speakers. Attendees will be permitted to, attendees will not be permitted to interrupt the business of the board. No profanity or foul language. There's no place in a public meeting of our board for profanity or cussing. Please keep your masks on at all times, including during your testimony. Your mask must cover your mouth and nose unless you have the appropriate medical waiver. No waving of signs, flyers, or posters. If you have handouts that you wish to share with the board, you may hand them to Katie, sit it, seat it to my left. And then she will distribute on your behalf. As the president of the board, it is my duty to enforce these rules of civility and decorum. As such, I have the authority to rule any speaker out of order for violation of these rules. Further, I will have removed from the meeting anyone who does not heed these rules and fails to conduct themselves in a civil manner. And with that, we will begin our public comment. And our first, our first student to testify is Reed Davidson. Okay, Reed, are you there?
Yes.
Great, welcome. You have three minutes.
All right, thank you. Hello, my name is Reed Davidson. I'm a sophomore at South. I'd like to say that it's extremely disappointing to see that while other districts in the country are making the choice to move to online learning with the looming Omicron variant, ASD has chosen to remove its most effective mitigation strategy. Masks are by far the most effective, easiest, and truly the only mitigation strategy for ASD. Sure. Other mitigation strategies look fine on paper, but do they in practice? No. Masks are the most effective way to prevent transmission of COVID, which is precisely why ASD has not had any major outbreaks. The Keep ASD Symptom-Free campaign is not an effective strategy. COVID-infected individuals are most infectious two days before they begin to exhibit symptoms, meaning that this strategy, strategy does not keep the most infectious individuals from the buildings. In addition, many students come to school even with symptoms. While testing is an important strategy, it doesn't work if students come back to school while they are waiting on results. About a month ago, I had a classmate sit down, lean over and say, I hope they don't pull me out of school. I'm still waiting on my test results, before she blew her nose and took a cough drop. Social distancing is simply non-existent in schools. I am the only person I've ever seen use the hand sanitizer containers. Vaccines are an effective tool, but the Omicron variant is expected to have many breakthrough infections. Vaccines also do very little to protect the many adamantly unvaccinated individuals in school buildings. Finally, parent-informed or optional masking fails students who want to protect themselves. Typical surgical masks or cloth masks generally serve the purpose of protecting others from the mask wearers, which makes this policy inherently flawed. This means students like myself who want to be protected have to trust that others will wear their masks voluntarily, with an estimate of 40% of students willing to do that. ASD should make the choice to protect all of its students. The new Omicron variant, now accounting for the vast majority of U.S. cases, is extremely more transmissible. The CDC is predicting 1.3 million new cases by Christmas. Without a mask requirement, cases will spike beyond belief in our schools. This means that we will consistently have students out for quarantine, which is detrimental to student learning. High school teachers at least see upwards of 150 students every single day in their classes. Without masks, it only takes one of those students to transmit COVID to their teacher, meaning that teacher would be out for 10 days. Substitutes are inadequate and underqualified right now, with many not knowing the subject they are trying to teach. Indeed, I had a teacher contract COVID and even though he tried to provide as many materials as he could online, he came back before he was fully feeling better, but my class was behind for more than three months. Ultimately, with masks, students and staff have the small inconvenience of wearing a piece of cloth on their face, much like they must wear a shirt and pants on their body to come to school. But without masks, transmission will ramp up and students and staff health and learning will suffer as a result. ASD should value student learning and health and reverse this decision immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Reed. Next, we have Dan Loring in person. Dan Loring? Okay, I'm not seeing him. Let's try Judy Blevins in person. Judy Blevins, B-L-E-V-I-N-S. Next in person, we have Michael Whitecell. Yeah, we've got some. I'll try to circle back, so let's just see who. Okay, we have telephonically, Nile Sherwood Williams. Nile Sherwood Williams. Moving on, Corey Aist. Corey Aist, sorry. I gave you a whole new name, didn't I? I'm so sorry. Welcome, you have three minutes. Is it, is it not on? There it is.
Thank you, President Bellamy and ASD school board members. My name is Corey Aist, President, Anchorage Education Association. Although the last couple of years have been challenging, we all know, ASD has had actually some very good success stories. All the educators have been instrumental in opening schools this fall and keeping schools open. I don't believe we had to close one school this fall. Couple of classes, but not an entire facility. Your educators have done everything we have asked them to do. When ASD went all online, your educators did their best to transition with minimal experience, training, and resources to meet the needs of students and their families. When ASD went back to face-to-face learning, educators transitioned to their classrooms knowing well there was an increased risk of illness. All ASD staff have worked hard to limit absenteeism by masking and practicing other mitigation strategies. That is a huge success story for our district when you compare it to other districts around the state and the country who are not following similar mitigation strategies. With all that has been accomplished, our district, like others, is in crisis. Student outcomes for this first half of the year may not be exactly what we were hoping for. We'll soon find out why. It's not the curriculum, it's not curriculum implementation. Dr. Murphy in his book highlighted concerns and issues. But these are not the leading problems. We have some structural problems that we have to fix within ASD that is impacting student learning. We have some structural problems that we have to fix within ASD that is impacting student learning. First, staffing shortage. Uh, I noticed on the report today, the, uh, employment report, six more educators are resigning and twenty more ESPs, educational support personnel. This is extremely uncommon to see repeating itself at every board meeting, on every report. Inadequate staffing impacts the continuity of learning and the flow of a classroom, course, or program. Limited absenteeism is excess, but there is still a lot of it for both staff and students. Second, large class sizes. We have got to do something to limit and, uh, lower class sizes. Future staffing at ASD looks tenuous as other school districts in Alaska and across the US incentivize their workforce to stay. And I'm still looking for the steps, uh, we can take to incentivize our workforce. Ironically, both TOTEM and AEA continue to work on behalf of students and families without a contract, which exacerbates this issue. Where do we go from here? Well, I don't have time to tell you, so I will send that in a follow-up email. But I do want to finish, student outcomes will only be achieved with a capable and enthusiastic workforce. The actions the school board takes sooner rather than later can make a significant difference in retaining your workforce into the next school year. Please, let's start, let's start that sooner than later.
Thank you, Corey. Next, we have, uh, Kirsten Ri- Ryder. Maybe it's Kristen Ryder, sorry. Kristen? Okay, I think the weather is bad outside, or getting bad. And then, uh, telephonically, we have Roslyn Grady Weiss. I see that she's there, Roslyn?
Hello?
Hi, welcome, you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Roslyn, I am the vice president and founder of the Alaska Coalition of Bi-Pac Educators, and I am a mother of five, all a product of Anchorage School District, and I am a paraprofessional as well as a product of the Anchorage School District. I would like to give some put-ups and then put-downs. First, my put-up is, I would like to say, I hope you all have a happy holidays and happy new year. I wish that I could be there. Second, my put-down, alright. I would just like to comment on the fact that we got this email last week that I personally didn't think, did, personally think, didn't take staff into consideration. Parent-informed asking, what does that mean? And why didn't specific information go out to principals running these schools before an email like this went out? Because by golly, I, as well as other staff members, had a whole lot of questions the next day that couldn't be answered. I mean, I really, I know we all just learned about this new variant, Omicron. This variant is currently shutting school systems down. This variant currently doesn't give a darn about vaccination one, or two, or the boosters being followed. With that being said, I hope that we really think about this decision. We know that the schools are a Petri dish. We also know that parents will send children to school sick. We also know that children were coming to school sick. I know we are sick and tired of being sick and tired, but I hope that we move on these decisions with common sense and not fear of what our friends want us to do. I would really like the board to reconsider given Dean of Bishop so much power over masks or no masks because a decision like this right now before winter break really sucks. I get it, darn if you do, darn if you don't. But I really hope that vacations and family gatherings, et cetera, are really taken into consideration because Omicron is actually a thing. The virus is mutating with every chance it gets. Delta, this one, that one, we about to be a step show in a minute. And the way our city administration is handling this, I would really think that the school district would handle it a lot better than it has been. But to be on winter break and then say, when we get back on January third, parents can decide to send their kids to school with masks or no masks, did we think maybe we should ask teachers how they want to run their environment? So please, again, take this choice and everyone is to full consideration. Next time you do something like this, prepare your administration for questions that are going to be asked. Like, will staff still be expected to wear masks? Will we be expected to be masked, the mask police for students whose parents want them to wear masks? Will individual teachers be able to require masking in their classrooms? Will they be able to encourage? Will there now be a return to contact tracing and quarantining due to close contacts? This statement coming from someone important to me said, the current standards for this are contingent upon people being masked or va- and/or vaccinated. If the masks go away, it would seem that the current standard is no longer applicable. But we do not know yet, what's the new standard?
Thank you very much. Uh, next in person, we have Barb Clark. Welcome, Barb, you have three minutes.
Good evening, I'm Barb Clark, and I've been teaching English at West for twenty-two years, and I'm speaking tonight for myself. Testing period happens five or six times a day at West. The bell rings, and like most teachers, I stand in my doorway greeting my arriving students and helping to keep things moving in the halls. For all of this school year, in part of last, that's met in part mask patrol. In the course of a day, probably most of West's eighteen-hundreds, those, so students walk past me at some point. In all that time, I've encountered maybe five or six students who don't cheerfully and comfortably comply with the mask rule. With a few who don't, the issues almost always are protruding nose, not the complete absence of a mask, and a gentle reminder elicits, oops, sorry, and a quick readjustment, not, no, I won't, you can't make me, or this is just too hard. Kids are used to masks, and they mostly understand why we wear them. And they know it's not a lot to ask of them to help keep us all safe and healthy. West is a great place. Our excellent principals, that's the tone, and our staff and student body create a culture in which supporting each other is the norm, where we think about how we represent and how we interact. When we explain to students that my mask protects you, your mask protects me, that means something very West. I often cite my favorite law, Alaska State Statute fourteen point zero three point one five, which says in part, that the purpose of education in Alaska is to ensure that students will exemplify the best values of society and be in, be effective in pro- in improving the character and quality of the world around them, end quote. State statute says that it's core to what we do as schools, to send people out into the world who can, in this case quite concretely, see beyond their own noses. Hang on, lost my place, sorry. People who care about the greater good and hold themselves responsible for helping to create it. My mask protects you, your mask protects me. If this pandemic can be said to have an upside, at however great a cost, maybe it's that. It's teaching us how very much we need to understand our health, our safety, and our well-being is inextricably knit together. For as long as the pandemic lasts, masks are our most salient and immediate embodiment of that. It's an important lesson, and there's no good reason for us to stop teaching it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, telephonically, we have Lise Christensen. Lise Christensen? Next, Sorin Worth. Sorin, it's star six to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, you have three minutes.
Good evening, board members, my name is Sorin Worth. I'm a teacher at Diamond, teaching language arts. ASD's impulsive decision to lift the mask mandate in our schools is insanity. We are facing staffing shortages, holiday travel, and with the Omicron variant unprecedented, unprecedented rates of viral transmission. Schools acco- across the country are shutting down as COVID surges. In this context, a context that includes a mutating and rapidly spreading virus, giving up a fundamental protection is unacceptable. Just Friday, I had a student collapse in my room with another almost too sick to walk to a nurse, both exhibiting acute COVID symptoms. Multiple students have been out of, sick with unreported COVID. Masks don't only provide physical protection, but a form of mental health protection. With renegade mask-wearing in a school community where students do not fully understand the virus transmission and Omicron, you're placing stress and anxiety on an already extremely stressful environment. Why this? Why now? Someone in an online forum echoed what I perceive to be the attitude of ASD leadership and its rash and reckless decision. Man up is the attitude, join the maskless mob. The idea of voluntary masking is, of course, oxymoronic. Your mask only works when others are masked. Masks are proven to be one of the only measures to prevent transmission, and this is why the CDC recommends all students pre-K through twelve continue to mask up. Moreover, as usual, it will be the poorest kids and large families who will be most harmed by this. Killing the mask mandate endangers teachers, staff, children, and our community. This declaration is short-sighted, reckless, ignores basic safety precautions, but worse, it puts lives at risk, the lives of teachers, of families, and of children, and for what? For what? Political ambition? We have a dichotomy. Either this is, this unilateral decision, no teachers are certainly consulted, is ignorant, or it's malicious. Elevating someone's political image over the safety of our children is immoral. You can't pretend your way out of this pandemic. Now, school board, do what's wor- do what's right and figure out a way to walk this back. Thanks for your time, and remember, wearing a mask is an act of love. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Regina Pierce in person. Welcome. And you have three minutes.
My name is Regina Pierce, I'm the West High School nurse, a mom of two in ASD secondary schools, and a spouse of an elementary school employee. When I was a little girl, one of my favorite games with my sister was to play the floor is lava. You know, the one where you move all the furniture, you jump from cushion to cushion, pillow to pillow, you never touch the floor. Let's think of COVID in terms of this game. You push the furniture far apart, it gives you greater distances of people and traveling. So, this also increases the risks that exist over the holidays with COVID. The rug, the one that anchors the cushions so they don't slide out from under you as you leap and land, this represents the city's decrease in testing availability and the new Omicron variant, neither of which can the district directly influence, but its presence will be felt by all. Now, let's remove the throw pillows. This represents the decrease in efficacy that vaccines have without the boosters, as many of our city are not yet fully vaccinated or have received their boosters. And last but not least, remove the furniture cushions completely, as these are all that stand between us and the lava. The cushions, in this case, representing masks. Masks were the only true mitigation strategy that is being utilized at all schools effectively all the time. As close contact mitigation and notification we stopped doing in most of the secondary schools, and social distancing have not been utilized due to space and high numbers of students in classrooms. The district has already made changes in the cutting of the COVID manager position. We also have a brand-new senior director of healthcare services who begins on January third. I ask that the board and all of its members reconsider the discontinuation of masks at this time to ensure the safety of our students and staff while more data comes out regarding the new variant and holiday travel. Let's not wipe away the hard work that staff, students, families, and our community have all done in the last year and a half. Thank you all, and for all that are here during break, thank you for joining. For all the students, and for each other and our community, good night.
Thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to, uh, number twelve, Danielle Kemp. Star six to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes.
Alright, thank you. Um, my name is Danielle Kemp. I'm a retired Army Combat Officer, teacher in the ASD, and parent of two ASD students. I'm also the president and co-founder of the Alaska Coalition of Bi-Pac Educators. So, the ASD superintendent's letter opens up with quote, alright, "A semester of full-day in-person learning has come to a close without a school closure or widespread COVID-19 outbreak in the ASD," unquote. Good, so, what we're all to understand here is that instead of continuing in this success that kept us safe, we're now supposed to, uh, yank away our best protection and, and expect for the virus just to simply respect our good wishes? Come on, it's naive. Naive and a dangerous lapse in judgment, there's no other way to put it. What also concerns me about this situation is a lack of communication between the administration and the board. Last week, Jamie Allen replied to a question about school masking in one of those cuckoo Facebook groups that she's a member of. The question that was asked was, when will the Anchorage School District do the same? Allen replied with, "January."
Mr. Kemp, can you refrain from, uh, naming other individuals, please? You can refer to their behavior.
Alright, okay, alright, uh, did my time stop?
Keep, yes, she paused you. Keep going.
Alright, here we go. So I find this troubling, how did that person I just talked about know that the ASD mask mandate was going to be dropped even before the school board did? Was it a good guess? Maybe, maybe not. Bottom line is, the administration cannot conduct its business in this manner. It's not consistent with good order, discipline, or effective governance. It also erodes teacher morale, its free decor, and trust and confidence in the ASD's senior leadership. On top of all this, the administration has done nothing about hiring more teachers of color, done nothing about growing incidence of individual racism in our schools, has not released a NESTA curriculum that was supposed to be released this semester, has operated in bad faith during contract negotiations, and is now dropping the mask mandate that has helped keep us safe from COVID closures so far. And now, Omicron has overtaken Delta as the dominant strain in America. School districts across the country are closing their doors again. Retail stores, too, it goes on and on. But we are losing one of the best defenses against community spread. Sounds like all the ingredients for a teacher's strike to me. If you haven't figured it out yet, then let me be the first to break the news. Teachers are tired, the staff is tired, our principals are tired, parents are tired. We're just sick and tired of all the blankety-blank that we've been made to suffer through and put up with. I've asked a number of questions for this, that this administration must answer to the board, our teachers and staff, for our parents, and most importantly, for our children.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm gonna go back, is Mr. Loring here? Ms. Blevins? Mr. Whitecell, Wixel, no, Whitecell. Mr. Niall Sherwood Williams is on the line. Mr. Williams, star six to unmute.
Hello?
Yes, you have three minutes, sir.
Hi, yes, Niall Sherwood Williams, uh, resident of Anchorage, USA. Uh, here we are today, uh, nineteen hundred and seventeen hours Alaska Christian time, the twentieth of September, twenty twenty-one, about five days before Christmas. Uh, Board President, uh, Bellamy, respectfully, I do appreciate you, uh, censoring, uh, one of the prior persons. Equal censorship is important, I don't agree with the policy of the censorship, but the equal application thereof is important. At least if you're gonna be tyrannical, be tyrannical, you're correct. Um, Members of the parents out there, um, we know that this is obviously an end around with the masks. Um, the school board will vote, um, either six to one or seven to oh, um, to reinstate the mask mandate, um, prior to January third, when your children will be able to breathe freely again. There was a number of talks about the Omicron variant, about kids, um, getting sick in school. It's an adverse reaction to the bioweapon injection, the shot, the Pfizer shot. Um, we know that certain members of, uh, the administration took bribes and extorted money, um, from Pfizer to install these bioweapons in the children of Anchorage with willful and knowing intent to cause physical harm up to and including death of these children. So when they say that they're having adverse reactions and can't even walk out of the classroom to get to the nurse, that's because they're having myocarditis. That's because maybe their kidneys are failing. That's because you've been excluding their ability to breathe oxygen for hours on end, while you have- while you have officers like Sergeant Reynolds abusing and belittling them. Children are human beings. They have the same rights enumerated to all citizens and all human beings in the United States Constitution. And for y'all globalists, it's also enumerated in the United Nations Declaration on Human Rights. So stop with the prior restraint of myself. I'm sitting at home today, I'd much rather be there looking you in the eye, members of the school board, and calling you tyrants directly to your face. Cease and desist in Jesus' name. The tort liability is coming, I'll see you at Fitzgerald.
Thank you. Next, uh, is Kristen Ryder here. Okay, I was just trying to, and then Lise Christensen. All right, so we'll keep going. Don Bachmann, in person. Welcome, Don. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Um, good afternoon, my name is Don Bachmann, and I'm here tonight as both a teacher and a mother to thank you for your decision to make masking a choice. It's been a long time coming, and I suppose it's better to wait than never. As stated uh, in our email, um, we have done quite a bit to be prepared for life with COVID. Although I was for mask choice at the beginning of the school year, I still consider this a big win. But along with this new guideline, many new concerns have arisen. I'm very worried about our children, and not in the way that I'm sure many of my colleagues are going to speak out about tonight. What I am concerned about is the talks of segregating classrooms into the vaccinated and unvaccinated. Yes, you heard it right, there's actual talk about whether this is something we teachers can do starting January 3rd. There are even some teachers that believe the unvaccinated should be shamed. This is not an overstatement or misrepresentation of words, this is exactly what is being said. It strikes me as kind of odd that these are some of the same people pushing for equity in our classrooms. Segregation is neither equal nor equitable in any sense of the terms. I'm blown away with the list of irrational reasons people have justified this as an option when school starts back in session. Sorry. I'm asking you all today to condemn this idea and stop it in its tracks. It's time that we were given the choice of whether or not to mask our children, um, as you've done. And it's time that teachers, all teachers, and district members realize that they should not be overriding this decision at this point. Thank you for your time and consideration, and thank you again for your decision.
Thank you, Don. Telephonically, number 14, Deborah Hansen. It's star six to unmute. Deborah Hansen, we can see you, but we cannot hear you. Star six to unmute. Okay, we'll come back. In person, we have Keith Harla, Har, um, Hardj, Hard, Hardhausen. Help me out, Keith. Okay, thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
You have three minutes.
President Bellamy, when you initiated the first round here of protocol, you encouraged us all to wear our masks and keep them on the whole time. And there's a reason for that. It makes this place a more comfortable place to be, given the threat that COVID presents. And that's the same thing that happens in a classroom when children are wearing their masks. They know it to help them be in a safe place. My name is Keith Hardjhausen, I teach at Tenali Montessori Elementary School for second and third grade. And children there understand that wearing a mask is an act of compassion and a development of empathy for their fellow human being. Now, I've heard people say that it teaches children to live life through a lens of fear. No, it teaches them to live a life with compassion. What does teach children to live life through a lens of fear is when 16-year-old girls get shot in the head a block and a half from our school. When we have parking lot shootings where people are bleeding out in the foyer, when we're hunkering down in our coat rooms, practicing drills quarterly. This teaches children to live life through a lens of fear, not the act of putting on a mask. When we put on our masks, we don't know who we're saving. It could be somebody's mother, it could be somebody's grandfather, grandchild. I work with people who have lost loved ones to COVID. We have parents at our school, we have children at our school who now do not have parents because they've lost them to COVID. I work with people at my school who are immunocompromised due to recent bouts with cancer. This decision to go mask optional is unacceptable. It is negligent. It puts those teachers who are immunocompromised in unbelievable stress, not to mention myself. This is not a great place to be. I wish I was not here advocating, having to advocate for the safety of my children and a safe place to teach. It's, it's really negligent that this decision was made. The way it was communicated was very poor. And I have so many questions. Who was consulted in getting to this point? Was it medical experts? And uh, I think the public has a right to know how this decision was made. Was the board informed? Were you consulted? Were political figures consulted? Um, my time is running short. And that's unfortunate. Dr. Bishop, you have six months left with the district, and a lot of people are wondering what's next for you.
We do not engage in the conversation, so you can ask your question, but you won't get a response.
Okay, so here's, here's the question. I really hope, I'll just rephrase it, I really hope that this policy isn't being made as a litmus test for future employment.
The Madam President, it's a personal.
Thank your point, thank you. Sir, you could, you, we could give him back his, he had seven seconds before the point of order. You have seven seconds to close out your comments, but you may not attack.
I, okay, it was, I really hope that the board reconsider's this decision because a lot is at stake in our community.
Thank you. Thank you, Keith. Next, we have uh, number 16, Heather Land. And that's telephonically. I don't see her there. Let's try, nope, she's not there either. All right, David Dowd, is David there? Moving on, number 18, Polly Carr. Star six to unmute.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, you have three minutes.
Good evening. I wanted to address Superintendent Bishop's announcement about lifting the mask mandate for students and staff, January 3rd, 2022. Um, I was confounded by this announcement for a few reasons. First, according to the Alaska COVID-19 Vaccination Dashboard, the number of fully vaccinated 12 to 18-year-olds in the Anchorage municipality is currently at 53%, and the number of fully vaccinated 5 to 11-year-olds is at 14.3%. These numbers are far below the national average. My 11-year-old daughter is not fully vaccinated yet. When the science has repeatedly shown masks to be a powerful prevention of community spread with COVID, I'm concerned for my child and many students who would be more vulnerable to contracting the virus due to removal of this basic layer of protection at a time when another layer of protection, getting vaccinated, is woefully incomplete in our community. Second, while Alaska may not be experiencing the Omicron variant like, say, New York City, we have cases and we are experiencing the highly contagious Delta variant. For the next two weeks, students and staff will be traveling to be with loved ones. It's a given that people will be exposed to COVID during these experiences. Yet Alaska has no travel testing requirement, so it's likely we won't see any impact of exposure until school has been in session for a couple of weeks. What is the logic of lifting the mask mandate January 3rd? Third, let's remember how masks help prevent and reduce transmission of COVID. Wearing a mask reduces the chances that you will pass the virus on to others. So making mask-wearing a choice means that those who do not care to wear a mask may be transmitting COVID more frequently to those who want to protect others by wearing a mask. Finally, this announcement was done without sound input and was a surprise to many. I cannot believe it was made after teachers went on break. What was the motivation? This decision is irresponsible, the timing is reckless, and the message it sends is selfish, that it's now every student and teacher for themselves. We're already fighting this virus in fatigue. It's, this is like kicking our kids and teachers to support them when they are already down. That's not the ASD school community I envisioned, and it's certainly not in line with the values articulated by the board and superintendent. Please do not allow the lifting of the mandate. Please establish a more sound approach that is informed by current activities and COVID statistics and protects key community health. I hope that you all have a healthy holiday with your loved ones, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Uh, next, number 19, Catherine Cross.
Hello, can you hear me?
There you are, yes, we can hear you, you have three minutes.
Thank you. So my name is Katie Cross, I'm a speech pathologist and a community member. And as a community member, I'm deeply concerned about the repeal of the mask mandate in ASD. I'm also deeply distressed that this decision was made by one person without board discussion or approval. The American Academy of Pediatrics, AAP, sent the district a letter in opposition to the decision to make mask parent-informed versus mandatory. I found a copy of this letter on the Blue Alaska News Blog. AAP stated that mask-wearing has proven effective in reducing transmission of virus-infected individuals and that a significant portion of the student population is not yet vaccinated. Masks provide protection against COVID-19 for unvaccinated students and reduces transmission. In addition, newer variants have demonstrated that they can continue to spread by into other vaccinated individuals, which makes masking a powerful tool in helping to protect the school community. The CDC stated that Omicron is spreading quickly in the US. The WHO and CDC reported that Omicron variant is doubling every two days. This new variant is just reaching Anchorage, and it will follow the same trajectory as, as in other places if we do not act. It is very concerning that masks will be optional at the same time that students are coming back from a long break where many have been in different places around the country. As reported in the Washington Post on December 18th, Denmark is finding that people who are vaccinated are just as likely to test positive for Omicron variant as people who are not vaccinated. As reported in this article, this leaves us with one layer of protection that is missing. We need to keep the mask mandate in place, which is another crucial layer ensuring the spread of the virus is reported by the CDC. As well as being a community member, I'm also a speech pathologist with ASD. Personally, I was exposed to COVID frequently by students this fall. In each case, I found this out three to seven days later. It is helpful that we now have testing in schools, but we need to do more than just testing. As reported by the CDC, the virus spreads before symptoms are present. Testing is helpful, but testing will always be behind, be behind the spread of the virus unless all students are tested daily. This is not reasonable or viable to test students daily, all students daily. We need to keep the mandatory mask mandate in place. As part of the ASD policy, all staff must quarantine if their COVID-19 test is positive for 10 days. ASD has a lack of substitute teachers to educate students um, throughout sick. ASD has struggled with this all fall. Um, the substitute, can you hear me still?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hey, sorry, something happened on my phone, I apologize. ASD troubles with covering classrooms all fall. The substitute pool is still very small. ASD will um, will not be able to staff its classrooms in schools. The lifting of the mandate, mask, the mask, the mandatory mask mandate at the six.
Thank you very much. Uh, let's see, number 20, Kristen Bologna.
Hello?
Yes. Hi, Kristen, we can hear you, you have three minutes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, good evening. Um, I am calling in as both a parent and a staff member of the school district. Um, and I'm here to speak in response to Dr. Bishop's December 16th email that was sent out to staff and families. In her correspondence, she wrote that the district would be transitioning to parent-informed masking, meaning that we would no longer mandate masking and allow parents to consider the risk levels and decide if they want their child wearing a mask. As of today, uh, the district's own website is reporting that community numbers currently place ASD in the highest risk of transmission in schools. So where are we finding then the data that supports removing the school mask mandate? Um, Dr. Bishop, in her back-to-school email on August 18th, wrote that schools are a microcosm of the community. Hence, if the virus is in our community, it is in our schools. If mask-wearing is an issue in our community, so is it in our schools. No matter our personal views, we are choosing to enter our schools every day to serve children in a safe manner. I've decided on a plan for ASD that supports the preponderance of scientific evidence during this time of COVID-19, end quote. We have been living with COVID now for almost two years. Uh, we found another variant of the virus uh, just a few months ago. Um, we are all very tired of this, yet there are still things that we need to do in order to make sure that COVID is no longer the threat that it is. Our State Department of Health is supporting that the COVID alert level for both Alaska and Anchorage municipality is high, with a rate of more than 100 cases per 100,000 people. The CDC continues to encourage everyone, vaccinated or not, to wear masks if they are in areas of high transmission, which we are, or are in crowded settings with limited social distancing, which describes exactly what happens in a school every single day. Again, where is the data that would reassure parents, students, staff that wearing a mask is no longer necessary? This preponderance of scientific evidence, as Dr. Bishop wrote about back in August, would tell us that the matter, the fact of the matter is, wearing a mask is a simple and effective way to reduce our risk of contracting COVID and of spreading it to others. School board members, I want to strongly urge you to push back against Dr. Bishop's decision to no longer require masks in our schools. It is both ill-timed and an ill-informed decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, number 21, Jacob Barra, in person. Welcome, you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Jacob Barra, and I'm an ASD teacher. More importantly, I'm a parent of three children who attend Chugiak Elementary and Mira Lake Middle School. The decision to move the parent-informed masking seems to have caught everyone I know in the district off guard and comes at such a terrible time. As you know, the Alaskan chapter, the American Academy of Pediatrics, is urging the district to hold off on this decision for at least several weeks after winter break. As a parent and educator, I couldn't agree more. There are curricular or academic reasons to make changes at semester break, but this isn't one of them. Secondly, the superintendent stated in her December 1st update to the community that when we move from the high-transmission red category, she will reassess our mitigation plan and possibly make changes. As of today, we are at 150 cases per 100,000 and still at high risk of transmission. And the Omicron variant, along with winter travel, could negatively impact this number. Lastly, wearing masks is such a non-issue in the classroom. In my experience, the vast majority of my students comply and understand the importance of masks as a key mitigation measure. I've always been an advocate for keeping schools open and keeping kids safe. Being back in the classroom has reminded me how important it is for students to be in class. This semester, one-third of my students missed five or more days, and one out of 10 students missed 11 or more days. And those who missed school struggle. This decision at this point of time puts students and staff attendance at risk at such an important time academically. I urge the board to take the advice of the American Academy of Pediatrics and hold off on this decision for at least a few weeks after winter break. Let's ensure a great and safe start to the spring semester. Since I have another minute, I just want to say, I'm not an alarmist, and I'm not afraid of COVID, but that's because I'm vaccinated and I know how to protect myself and others. There will be a time when masks are no longer needed, and now is not the time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next, we have number 22, Joseph Smiley. Next, we have number 22, Joseph Smiley, in person. Joseph Smiley. Not seeing Joseph. Kristi Ante, in person. Welcome, you have three minutes.
I have had the sincere pleasure of being a kindergarten TA for the last four years. It is quite possibly the best elementary school Anchorage has to offer. The staff at my school is top-notch, with everyone going 110% to meet the needs of our students. But to be honest, we are tired of COVID and the shortages that result in our daily lives. In September, I had to cover a kindergarten classroom by myself as a TA due to staffing shortages from COVID. Two weeks ago at my school, a teacher was unable to find a sub to cover a previously scheduled appointment. Last Thursday, the day the email came out announcing masks would be optional after Christmas break, my son had just come in after school to meet his teacher. My son has been out of school since COVID began, waiting to be fully vaccinated. My son was unable to meet his teacher that day. Why? Because they were out with COVID. On January 3rd, I, as a kindy TA, will begin helping out the sped department happily due to shortages. COVID is still very much a part of the Anchorage School District, whether we want to admit it or not. Masks are vital in helping contain the spread of COVID, but they only work when everyone wears them. When an individual goes in for surgery, it's not just one or two doctors that wear a mask, it's the entire team. Currently at my school, there are no plexiglass barriers, the cleanings with the very costly hypochlor solution have stopped. The only mitigation that I see is the use of masks. Symptom-free at ASD simply is not the case. At my school, kids have been sent back from the nurse's office with a Ziploc bag to tape to their desk to contain their used Kleenex, and to my knowledge, not one of these students was given a rapid test. Let me remove my kindergarten TA hat and approach you as a mom. As mentioned, my son has not attended public school since COVID started. My family has already paid the ultimate sacrifice with the death of my eight-year-old son due to non-Hodgkin's lymphoma, a disease I could do nothing about. My son's cancer has a prevailing theory that early exposure to the Epstein-Barr virus, which normally appears harmless, caused the mutation, letting the non-Hodgkins take over. As of July 2021 in Medical News Today, COVID-19 is being investigated and how it and the Epstein virus may work similarly in the body. Most children seem okay after a COVID diagnosis, but we have yet to discover the long-term effects. As the parent of a child that made the gut-wrenching decision to remove my son's ventilator, it is not an experience I wish on any parent. I understand nobody enjoys wearing a mask, but right now, we have a system that works, and quite honestly, kids don't seem to mind the masks, parents do. Right now, we need to take the politics of mask-wearing out of the discussion and focus on the science. I ask you to please revisit this issue in four to six weeks after holiday travel has stopped. Often, this travel is happening in areas where Omicron and Delta are seeing a surge. I have repeatedly shown up to do my job when asked. I now need you to do yours. Please make masks mandatory for another four to six weeks, and let me send my son back to school, knowing I have done everything possible to keep him and everyone else safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Caitlin Poindexter, in person. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. It is time to graduate from the mask mandate. Masks were optional in summer 2021. Masks being optional worked amazingly well. There was no known spread and no schools closed despite it being the largest summer school program in history, 9,000 students. My twin daughters were in a pre-K summer school program. They learned more academic and social skills in those two months than I'd seen them develop in the prior two years, even before COVID. I think they were so grateful to see people's full faces again. Masks have been a core part of the curriculum long enough. As a parent, I believe they should have always been an elective. My children are compliant and respectful, but they are too young to know the cost of their compliance. They do not understand the money in Big Pharma, the power and control aspects that far outweigh the health concerns. We have overlooked the impact masks have on our children's real-life subjects: learning basic academic skills, reading, writing, math, psychology, and health, their mental, emotional, social, physical, and nutrition. The COVID virus, regardless of variant, is microscopic. The chasms between threads and a cloth mask are enormous. Look, do a Google image search, by the way. They are preventing nothing except my children learning how to speak, read facial expressions, and develop their social-emotional learning. They rarely eat their snack and their lunch that I pack for them. The water bottles I send with them to school every day come back full. They are told keeping their masks on keeps other people safe. Then they sit inside their classroom at their tables next to their classmates to eat lunch. They do not want to risk getting someone sick, so they keep their masks on and do not eat or drink. They come home starving and dehydrated. I know that has direct impact on their learning. My daughters are not eating and drinking. They are surrounded by zombie humans. They cannot get a reassuring smile from anyone, and no one is allowed to hold their hands or give them hugs. I find myself wanting to behave poorly when I volunteer in their classroom. Their teacher is truly amazing, but no one can make up for the lack of human connection and learning that masks create. Please, if you're going to vote against this, bump it back a couple weeks. Do not make this a permanent thing.
Thank you very much. Ashley List. Telefonically, I do not see her in the queue. I'll circle back around. David Dowd. Heather Land. Deborah Hansen. Lise Christensen. Kristen Ryder. And the others I've done twice already. That concludes our public testimony. Are you signed? Did you sign up?
No.
Okay. Is it? Yeah, that's. She did sign up.
She missed the two.
Is this one on? Okay. Welcome, you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Marnie Hartill. Some of you know I'm a middle school classroom teacher. I'm testifying with concern about the recent announcement that ASD will drop universal masking January 3rd. Was staff surveyed? No. Were parents surveyed? No. Was the board consulted? I'm not sure. Here are some things about me you might not know. I don't like doing the dishes, but I like a clean kitchen when I wake up in the morning. I don't like picking up dog poop, but I have two lovable labs who make it all worth it. I don't like doing laundry, but I need clean clothes and linens. I don't like paying taxes, but I support strong public schools and plowed roads. Lord knows, tonight I'm grateful for plowed roads. I also don't like wearing a mask at work all the time, but I know it's the responsible thing to do. I know it sets an example for everyone else. I have received the vaccine and recently received my booster. It's also a responsible thing to do. It's as easy, and a good habit, as easy as wearing a seatbelt. Believe me, I'm tired of serving as the mask police, correcting one or two students in the halls or classrooms who have trouble keeping their mask above their nose. It's a chore to remind them to keep their mask up, but my students are wonderful and inspiring seventh and eighth graders. They make me proud. If I had a choice of teaching without a mask, instilling my students' smiles, or the choice of having frequent absenteeism caused by an increased spread of COVID in our community, I'd wear the mask. Mask wearing only works if it is practiced by the whole school community. Masks are meant to protect others from contracting illness from the mask wearer. It is left up to choice. The same families who don't believe in the science of vaccines also don't believe in the science of masking, therefore putting more students at risk around them in the classroom. We know that Omicron has more vaccine breakthrough cases than other variants. It is three times as contagious as Delta. We know that Anchorage is a global gateway for travelers. We know that this is the season when most of the employees, students, and families are traveling out of state. Why on earth would we start school after the New Year without our masks? It makes absolutely no sense. Let's go through the first few weeks of school when we return with universal masking. Some things you might not know about me is that I like long walks on the beach, and my sign is Aquarius. I also am a Groundhog. Here's an idea: Come February 2nd, we'll celebrate my birthday, and we can all come out looking for our shadows on Groundhog's Day, and perhaps at that time, the board might discuss a lift to the guidance for universal masking. I wish you all a happy holidays, and enjoy us New Year. Please drive safe tonight, wear your seatbelt. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And that ends our first hour of public comment. We are moving on to item E, consent agenda.
Madam President, I move to approve the consent agenda as listed on the main agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve memorandum number 052, 053, and 057 as listed on the consent agenda. Is there any objection? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved as presented.
Madam President?
Yes.
Could we have a five-minute break?
Absolutely.
We were two hours before this, came straight in here, and thank you.
Yes, thank you. Let's take a five-minute recess, be back at, what is it? 7:55. Hello? How did I know?
[inaudible]
And we're back, and we are at item F on our agenda, which is action items. Whenever you're ready.
Madam President, I move to approve ASD memorandum number 061, and approve revisions to board bylaws 9010, public statements.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I think that was, who was that? Remember Higgins? Was that, who's second? Tara? Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Moved in second that we approve memorandum number 061. I think, let's see, is there any public testimony? Okay, no testimony, so what is the will of the board? Revision to board policies number, I mean, board bylaws, 9010. Seeing no discussion? Yes?
Madam President, yeah, I just wanted to provide some context. My recollection is that this change came out of governance, I believe it's a request and even some language from Everett Donnelly to clarify the intent of the underlying board bylaws, and I don't foresee this making any substantial change to our board functions, but it does clarify some language. but it does clarify some language.
Thank you, Member Jacobs. Any other comment? All right, seeing no comments? Let's vote. Okay. Ms. Ellis? Your vote?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, and that passes seven, uh, yeas, seven noes. Thank you, guys. Next?
Madam President, I move to approve ASB memorandum number 062, and approve revisions to Board Bylaws 9323, Meeting Conduct Parliamentary Procedure.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second to approve memorandum 062, uh, which is a revision to Board Policy number 9323. And I think we had someone signed up? Yes. Mr. Dan Loring? Not seeing him here. So we will continue with the board discussion. Any discussion? Yes, for, Member Jacobs.
Thank you, President Bellamy. Uh, just again framing for this, uh, we discussed this in governance and took up the, the change to, uh, Board Bylaw. The intent is, um, to bring into practice something that this board is engaged in historically, as well as is the current iteration of the board. As it stands right now, the board has spent a significant, not insignificant, amount of time debating, um, the superintendent's ability to make incidental motions, points of personal privilege, et cetera. And this Board Bylaw revision would codify that, as suggested by our parliamentarian, uh, and backed up with a, a legal memo that was asked to be obtained and was obtained. So, um, a relatively minor change, but should improve how we function during meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Member Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, the, uh, I think this is in violation of the Anchorage Charter. Uh, Anchorage Charter, Part 1, Article 6, Education, Section 6.01, which I have provided to the members, um, says that the municipality, these public schools and municipalities shall be operated by a school board of seven persons elected at large from seats designated. And this would give power to an eighth person to make procedural motions before the board. I have serious concerns about the legal memorandum. Not so much what it says, Madam President, but what it doesn't say. There is no opinion before us today from the municipal attorney regarding the, the implications of this with the Anchorage Charter. And I believe the municipal attorney would be a very appropriate person to provide us with a, a legal opinion on this. There's no mention in the memorandum that was provided to the school district of the Anchorage Charter. And that's pretty incredible to me, Madam President, because as an attorney, the first thing I always look to is what's the relevant statutory law? And here we have an amendment, um, a legal opinion about, uh, a change in our policy that directly relates to the Anchorage Charter. But that section of the charter that I read you about the number of members of the board wasn't even mentioned in this legal memorandum. I think that's a very huge deficiency in this memorandum. And yet, um, because the charter says there's seven members of the school board, it's interesting that since the memorandum doesn't mention the charter, there's no legal opinion that it, this, this does not violate the charter. Now, the memorandum speaks to, that the attorneys were asked to analyze, and do an analysis of their opinion under Alaska law. Well, I don't know if, it's not clear from this if they're just ignoring the municipal law, or if they're, they're just basing this on state law. There's a lot in here about state law, but nothing about the Anchorage Charter. And so that's concerning to me. Maybe they did consider it, but it does, it's not clear. It doesn't say they did. So there is no statement in this legal memorandum that it, this proposal does not violate the charter. There's no analysis in this opinion of the constitutional obligations of elected bodies not to overly delegate their authority and functions. I fully recognize that the actual substantive motions have to be approved by a majority of the, of the seven-member board, the elected officials. But we all know that incidental motions or procedural motions could be very significant in the process, in, involved in the decision-making process. And there's no analysis of the potentially illegal dilution of the rights of actual board members. There's no example of any other school board, or legislative body for that matter, doing such a delegation to a non-elected individual. Not a single example of that. And there's no analysis of the potential illegal violation of the rights of voters in past elections that elected the seven members of the board. Those voters voted based on the charter, that there'd be seven members, and not that there'd be some extra member appointed for some processes of the board. They were entitled at the election to know what they were voting for. And they voted for seven members for this board, not an additional person to have rights on this board. And that could clearly be considered by a co, a court, a post facto dilution of the relative powers of the board members after they were already elected. And that's strongly disfavored by courts in the United States of America. And yet, none of these issues are addressed in this memorandum, Madam President, which I find, you know, disappointing, at least. You know, sometimes ideas are so fundamentally wrong that it's hard for attorneys to find any case law specifically on the subject. And this legal opinion cites zero, absolutely no case anywhere in the history of the United States that said such a delegation of authority was okay. And this, um, and no example has been provided in this memorandum of any legislative body, whether it be federal, state, or local level, doing this and being approved by any court anywhere in the entire nation. Maybe the cases are there, but it isn't in this memorandum. And I, you know, that's, I, I'd be interested in hearing about those if anybody's got them. And I think they ought to be part of the record if we've got them. If you were to think about this from a congressional point of view, and we're a legislative body here, um, it'd be like the Secretary of Agriculture being given procedural motion power at the U.S. Senate Committee that had agricultural jurisdiction. Well, nobody even dreamed to do that. Now, in a, in a parliamentarian system where the legislators are actually also the executive branch, that, that may make sense, but not in the United States of America. That's not we do, that's not how we do it here. The administration is separate from the legislative branch. And we all know that procedural matters can frequently change the outcome of matters that are, come before legislative bodies. So I don't think the board should move forward to a vote on this resolution without, uh, written answers to these legal questions. And if there are members that have done those, I'd sure welcome and like to get those and incorporate them in the record. But at this time, I would move that the board request an opinion on this resolution from the municipal attorney, and table this resolution to the action agenda at our next meeting.
Okay, there's, um, uh... Did I hear a second? Was that a, oh, Andy second? The motion is to table the memo, uh, number 62, until we've gotten a, a review from the municipal, um, uh, what is it? Legal?
The municipal, municipal attorney.
And it's been second? It was, was it time certain?
It was too. It was tabled to our next action agenda.
To our next.
In the hopes that we would get an, and, and request, uh, opinion from the municipal attorney.
Okay, that's the motion before you. The mo, the, the most, the new mo, the motion before you is to table till our next meeting, pending a, um, analysis from the municipal attorney. Member Holloman?
Uh, yes, I just want to say I think Member Donnelly raises valid points. Um, we have a lot of control over our processes, but we don't have control over the, the actual structure and membership of the board. And at times, you can think of an ex officio member as not a real member, but they are. And, uh, I think it's a question that's worth getting answered before we take action on this.
Okay. Other comments? Member Higgins?
Yeah, I guess what we're trying to shoot for first, I always like to go back to what is the problem? Or what is, what are we trying to accomplish? And, and would it, would it resolve the issue if we did say something like, "The district superintendent may recommend incidental motions and speak to matters under consideration." So it's not making a motion, but they can, she can make recommendations, uh, for incidental motions. Because what we're talking about, incidental being the process and procedures, I'd like, I'd like to recommend this. And then a board member would be the one to go ahead and propose it, and somebody else will second. You still have to have two board members that way to vote on it. But that would accomplish, it sounds like, what they're trying to get here. And that is, we, we want to hear from the superintendent, the process issue, recommendations and, and suggestions. But actually making the motion might be a, an issue of only a board can make a motion. So if we changed to say, "The district superintendent may recommend incidental motions and speak to matters," would that address the issue?
Actually, I think that would be 90% of the issue right there. Yes.
So the intent is not to make the superintendent a board member. She does not get a vote. She does not get to make mo, the, uh, uh, you know, the substantial motion. But I hear what Member Donnelly is saying. And, um, I don't see it quite the same way, but I hear what he's saying. Go on, Member, uh, Jacobs.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Madam President. I, uh, am, I would support getting a additional legal guidance from the municipal attorney if that would make, uh, Member Donnelly more comfortable voting on the memorandum and related Board Bylaws change. The memo that we've obtained that referenced state statute very well could have looked at the municipal charter as well, we just don't know. And I think there was complete transparency as to what information was available and what was requested and what was obtained. And, um, this memo, we could have had such a memo if it was asked for weeks ago. So I'm fine with doing it now. Didn't have to occur today, though. Um, just a, a note, I guess.
Okay, so the most, oh, yes. Member Holloman?
And I won't make an amendment on this point, but as a follow-up, if it is the case that, uh, we can't add an ex officio member, if we are able to provide the ability to make motions, I, I think there's transparency to be had in the administration making their own motions, as opposed to finding a board member to do it. I mean, as a board and administration, we work that closely and we work cooperatively. Um, I, I think the value of them using their own voice through the superintendent makes a lot of sense. But, but I do think there's a valid legal question about whether or not we can do that as a board. So that, that would be my follow-up, if in fact we can't designate ex officio members.
All right, thank you. Dr. Bishop and then the voter.
Thank you, and I, I just appreciate the consideration. I want to go on record that this was not a request of mine. I've read, um, that I want to become a board member. I will never run for a board. I just want to let you know that. Um, it actually was in reference to, um, there was a behavior that wasn't stopped for a point of order. It was attacking staff members, employees of Anchorage School District. And I asked, I said, "Point of order" to basically stop the behavior. And it was a reaction because it wasn't being said. And we have, um, it's part of our, our, our promise to people. And so I did it, um, not to make changes, but, um, when, when we think about it, that, that was the type of motion, not any other. Because certainly on memos, um, in regard to your actions, um, administration has input onto those, like that, that's part of the process. So I just appreciate the thought and the follow-through on getting it right. But, um, I want to be clear, there isn't a, an action that I want to, to have a vote on these things. Thanks.
Thank you. Member Jacobs?
Uh, sure, yeah. And I, uh, I didn't speak to, I think, Member Donnelly and Vice President Holloman, uh, comment early regarding an ex officio member, adding a member to the board. Certainly wasn't the intent, and I don't think the language of the memorandum says that either explicitly or, uh, the intent. The, the problem being addressed is that this board would, very well could be due to a, a number of new board members have not used our procedural power to stop staff attacks, and which has resulted in significant delays on, in our meetings, and resulting in, uh, the people's business not getting done in timely manner. And so the goal is for, um, for us to get to our business in a, in an expeditious manner and make sure that we're protecting our staff and honoring our policies and procedures. However we choose to do that, um, is fine by me. This is simply one way. Um, and so when we get the memorandum back, we can evaluate our options. And I would support, uh, Member Donnelly's amendment.
I, I guess I have a question. Does it have to be the municipal attorney to look at the charter?
Madam President, I think the municipal authority, attorney has authority over the school board also indirectly. I mean, when it comes to matters of the charter, that's the ultimate source of opinion, official opinion from the city.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, Madam President, early on, the municipal attorney did call me and thought I wanted to be part of the board. And I said, "No." It was for things such as point of orders, and I explained what had happened. And I actually explained that, that you were the one, you know, that called it out and asked for the question, and, and he didn't call me back since. And that was about two months ago.
Thank you for that. So the motion before you is to table memorandum number 062 until our next meeting, and a review by the, um, municipal attorney. Oh. What did, what did we put? Municipal? Uh, legal opinion, I guess, is fine. All right, we ready to vote on the motion? Michelle? Okay, if everybody votes? Did you vote, Member Donnelly? And that passes, six yeas, one nay. Moving on?
Madam President, I move to approve ASB memorandum number 056. It authorizes the superintendent to prepare the Anchorage School District's fiscal year 2022/23 preliminary financial plan and budget in accordance with the financial projections and budget standards set forth in this memorandum.
Is there a second? Second, thank you. All right. ASD memorandum moved in second to approve memorandum 056, the Fiscal Year 2223 pro forma, Financial Planning, Outlook, and Budget Development Guidance. What is the pleasure of the board? There are no speakers. Seeing no discussion?
May I make a quick comment?
Sure, you may.
Perhaps a question? I thought that, uh, our CFO did an excellent job of walking the board or participating board members at the last finance meeting through the pro forma. Really appreciate the, the time, the extra time, uh, that, that we all took to do that. I did want to follow up. There was a quick question that I asked at the time, and I just wanted to ask- wanted to ask it again, maybe more for the record. How many, referring, I'm referring to Table 3 in the, in the, again, appendix. Table 3, and on page 7, oops, I lost my notes. On page 7, it depicts the number of staff that we will need in FY '23 to continue operations if student enrollment remains steady. And I just wanted to clarify, how many staff, it's a two part question, how many staff are we short right now? And the second would be, what's normal turnover in terms of retirement? Like, where are we at in thinking about FY '23 with staff attrition?
Sure, thank you. I can ask for assistance from our chief HR officer in regard to staffing. My recollection is about 250 to 300 certificated people retire a year and have for quite some time. But what is our expected, Mr. Tiefert, on any given time? And how do you see this year being any different?
Thank you, Superintendent Bishop, through the President, to remember lessons. We are trending, we believe, around that figure. It is typically the expectation that we receive between 250 and 300, sometimes a few more than that, certificated resignations in a given school year. The last I looked, we had 59 resignation, certificated resignations to date, which is consistent with most years. And everything points to a similar trend through the end of the year.
Did, did you guys have anything to add?
We're just here just in case.
Oh, just in case? Okay. All right, you said you had another, you good? Okay, thank you. Member Higgins?
Yeah, I just want to say a few things. First of all, I appreciate the work that goes into this. And just to the public perspective of this, how complex it is. People would ask, what would happen if the school district's budget doubled one year? And it did. The legislature decided to pay off a lot of PERS and TRS deferred payments into the retirement, and they distribute that out to all the school districts, you never see in your checking account. And then it comes right back in to pay it off. So our budget looks so much bigger. It was impressive amount. We've got monies in here that we see and monies that we are anticipating. I mean, we put a lot of money into the grants fund with the hopes that things are going to come out, because if we do get additional, we want to make sure we can take it because it's in the grant. But it doesn't mean we're going to get it, and we know historically we don't get it. So these budgets are complex. What it really comes down to, how much money do we have to spend in the classrooms and the schools versus money that's dedicated for transportation, for food services, from grants, all that type of stuff. So I think we need to do as a board, meeting with community councils, is making sure that we communicate this. I've tried to do that. And to the public, somehow simplifying this thing, which I don't think can be done, but it is, it is an issue that different pots of money are there, and it's artificial for all purposes of spending the money in the classroom and dedicated towards changes in the academic outcome. The other part that is here, but you don't see it really so much in the pro forma, but is that additional federal funds, the question is, how long do we fill the gap between how much we're spending versus how much we get every year? And then when all that money's out, runs out, it's kind of like an inheritance. At the end of that, you don't have anything more to slow down the decline that we're going to have. And then we have a massive drop in it. So without getting additional funding from the state, five years in a row, flatlined, that flatlines local government contributions as well. So we're not, you know, look at the property taxes, it isn't operationally coming from us. We've got a decline right now with the state income because of the drop in attendance, and that save whole provisional, additional monies is declining rapidly. And so we're going to be facing a cliff. So it's not spending wildly or anything else like that. We've got a real fund services issue where, I think, put it there, 10 years of no growth, of limited growth leaves us $70 million short, and given inflationary factors. So I appreciate this information. I think the public out there needs to understand what this data tells us and what it shows what the risk factor is right now to education locally. If we don't get adequate funding, our classroom sizes go up. We've got a Pyke-Sodham study that updating that says, well, classroom sizes are so much greater than the majority of schools in the lower 48, where the courts have ruled adequate funding is lower classroom sizes. And without that, you're not adequately funding. So we have some real serious issues to deal with. This is just giving us a snapshot, not how we're going to handle it and what we're going to do with it. But I hope the public understands that we've got a lot of different pots of money, and when the people will want to say, you're spending all this money, we're not, we do not have control of it, and inflationary factors are really bad. So I appreciate the work that you've done. I think you did a good job of explaining it to the committee, how this breaks out. And we need to get out there and get the public a little bit more educated. And we did a good discussion in December 10th with the legislature as well, in the assembly, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I really will ditto everything you just said, especially the part about educating the public and sharing, having our meetings with the legislators and implementing our calendar, because it's on our calendar. I think we call it education funding 101 for the public. So I look forward to those opportunities. Okay, not seeing any more hands or comments. Let's vote. Michelle?
Yes. Yes.
And that passes, 7-0. Thank you. Item G on the agenda is non-action items. They will come back to you next year. Literally, next year. There is no other public comment unless someone in the room would like to comment. And that brings us to item I, superintendent update. Dr. Bishop?
Thank you, Madam President. First, I would like our safety security coordinator to please come forward, Ms. Ashley Lally. And I have prepared what we have done, why, Kathy Moffitt's on the video right now. She's about to get probably the, we just have some slides that Ashley's prepared. And I wanted, I thought this was important for the board. We did share this with principals the last week of school when we were here in our general leadership. And it was just some insights into the Oxford shooting in Michigan. And wanted to just share that with you and how every piece of information that we get, we learn and move forward with our students and their safety in school. So the principals felt this highly valuable and suggested, one of them suggested, asked if the board had seen it. And so Ashley is just masterminding what she does, and she has connections with people like her in other parts of the country, her position, rather. So I'll turn it over to Ashley, and she's just going to walk us through actually what did and what did not happen there and for reflection for all of us.
Yep, I want to start off by apologizing and having to talk about such a heavy topic during which is and should be a really joyous season. But it is important to review these situations as soon as they occur. There's always something to learn. There is always things that we can do better to improve our processes. So we will continue to learn about this. There'll be really in-depth investigations in the coming months and the coming years. But what we have here is what we know now. And I wanted to start off by acknowledging the victims that were killed in this tragedy. They were Madison Baldwin, she was 17, Tate Meyer, he was 16, Hannah St. Juliana, she was 14, and Justin Schilling, he was 17. Six other students and one staff member were also injured. There is one student who is still in the hospital. She's in stable condition, but they're thinking she'll be home in the next two to four weeks. Everyone else is back home. I'm going to go over a quick timeline, and this is one thing that may change as we gain more information. There's preliminary reports that this timeline could have started as early as the 16th of November with the shooter posting things on social media. But I don't have quite enough info yet to really talk about that. I do think that more info will come out in the coming months about that. But on the 26th, which was the Friday following Thanksgiving, the shooter's father bought a handgun at a Black Friday sale, and the shooter was present for that purchase. Over the course of the weekend, both the shooter and his mother posted things to social media specifically about the weapon. The student did not post anything threatening, really just excited about his Christmas present. And tellingly too, the mother and the son did go to a shooting range over the weekend to test out the new weapon. On Monday, the 29th, when he was back at school, a concerning incident occurred, and I will speak to the details about that on the next slide. But it was enough for the shooter and the school admin to have a meeting. And then the next day, Tuesday, the 30th, the day of the shooting, there was another concerning incident that precipitated yet another meeting with the shooter and school officials. And again, I'll talk about the details of that meeting on the next slide. But that meeting occurred at 10:00 AM on Tuesday, the 30th. At 12:50, the shooter entered a bathroom with his backpack. At 12:52, he exited and began shooting in the hallway. By 12:58, the shooter was apprehended. So a very quick response, he was apprehended within five minutes. They said that SRO and another responding deputy were on scene within two minutes and apprehended him about three minutes after that. That lines up with kind of historically, events like this, they are over within eight to 12 minutes is kind of the general timeline. So this was a little bit of a faster response, but does line up with the fact that these occur very, very quickly. And it really proves that a lot of damage can be done in a very short amount of time. At 1:15, news started to break of the shooting. At 1:22, the mother texted the son, don't do it. I think that's important to note just because it shows that the family, probably because of those incidences leading up to Tuesday, but also knowing that he did have access to a firearm, were very quickly able to put together that their son was the shooter. About 15 minutes after the mother texted the son, the father did call the police department. He reported his gun missing, and he did say that he believed that his son was the shooter. So now I'm going to talk a little bit about the school involvement leading up to the shooting. So again, to go back to that first concerning incident on Monday, the 29th, a teacher saw the shooter looking up ammunition on his cell phone. The teacher was concerned enough about this to bring it to counselors and school administrators. They pulled him out of class. They put in a phone call with the mother, when the mother did not respond to the phone call, they left a voicemail. They followed up later in the day with an email to the mother. The shooter was, you know, kind of explained off the looking up ammunition on his phone, saying that we're a sporting family, we were just out of the shooting range over the weekend. And I want to note that because they did not see anything concerning in terms of his behavior with them in the meeting. You know, I don't think it's outside the realm of possibility that our own students at ASD would be looking up ammunition. We obviously have a big subsistence hunting population, even just sport hunting up here. So, you know, parts of Michigan are similar. They did not find that to be concerning in and of itself. The mother, she did receive the voicemail, she did receive the email. She never contacted the school back, but she did text her son later that day. And to quote it there, she said, lol, I'm not mad at you, you have to learn how to not get caught. Later that evening, when the shooter got home from school, he made two videos on his cell phone. And this is where it starts to become more targeted and specific, where he does talk about shooting up the school to include murdering students. He did not post these videos to social media, but they were on his cell phone. Also that day, he had a notebook in his backpack with more specific targeted writings in it. And those are two important things to note because that's really the first time where the threats become targeted, you know, specific and real. Up until that point, there's not a whole lot that the school can do, but the second it becomes specific like that is when we can step in. So that was all on Monday, the 29th. On Tuesday, another teacher reported more concerning behavior, and this was a drawing that he had made in the class. It was violent, there was a gun, there was blood, there were bullets, there were concerning words, not necessarily specific words, but definitely concerning words. The teacher again brought it to counselors in the front office. He sat in the front office for an hour and a half, waiting for his parents to arrive because this time the school did say, you have to come, we need to meet with the parents as well. That whole time when he was in the front office, school staff were observing him. They said he was cool, he was calm, he was collected. He was concerned about missing classes. He asked if his science homework could be brought to him so he could work on it in the front office. And again, these are important things to note because they're looking for those signs of, you know, being nervous. He could have started to feel like he was getting cornered, but they did not see any signs of him thinking that way. So that's important to note as well. At this meeting, when his parents arrived and with school officials, he said that he wanted to be a video game designer, and that drawing was him designing a video game. Again, he was able to calmly explain off his behavior. At this point, the school had asked the parents if they wanted to take the shooter home with them, and they declined. They said, no, we have to get back to work, we would prefer if he stayed here. The school allowed the shooter to stay there. They did tell the parents that they had to get him a counseling session within 48 hours. And really, they gave him an ultimatum. They said, if you do not get a counseling session within 48 hours, we're going to call Child Protective Services. But they did not require the shooter to leave with the parents at that time, so he re-entered the school. As you know, this meeting was at 10:00, and at 12:50, he went into the bathroom and exited at 12:52. In terms of law enforcement involvement, they were not notified by the school at any point throughout, you know, these concerning behaviors leading up to the incident. And then beyond that, the shooter was not on law enforcement radar for any reason. So at no other time in his life before this did he have any involvement with law enforcement. But the key there is that the school did not notify law enforcement at any point. There is an SRO assigned to Oxford High School. We're unsure if he was in the building at the time of the shooting. We are assuming that he was not there due to the fact that he and another deputy who's not assigned at the school were the two to apprehend the shooter. But we weren't really able to ascertain whether or not he was on site when the shooting started. You can see there that they apprehended the shooter within three minutes after arriving on scene. So again, a very fast response. In terms of the school response, Oxford is an Alice school, so they do conduct Alice drills. An announcement went out over the intercom, calling for a lockdown. And I do want to make it clear that we do not say lockdown for Alice because it is a different thing, but they did say lockdown. So for that school, that meant closing their classroom doors, locking their classroom doors, and they did start to barricade. They were moving desks in front of the doors. There are student reports talking about picking up calculators and scissors as part of the countermeasures, which is something that we do practice as part of these drills. The shooter did attempt to enter classrooms but was unsuccessful. They said that there were bullet holes kind of near door knobs, but he did not try very hard. And that also lines up with things we've learned from similar instances where they're very quickly trying to move through, so they try to access fast. They're not going to spend a lot of time trying to access unless it's for a specific target. And that's why really locking and barricading is a very effective means. Now, at the end of the day, I hate that we have to do these drills, but I really do believe that it probably saved lives in this. that it probably saved lives in this situation. Key takeaways, and I'm going to read these essentially off the slide, because I do think that each one is very important. Involve law enforcement early and often for anything that includes violence, weapons, targeted aggression, or the possibility of an escalating situation. And we did make it clear to principals when we briefed this that involving law enforcement does not mean that a child is going to be charged with something. They have to do that investigation to decide whether or not there is something criminal to charge them with. And I think that's a barrier for some staff to get over. They feel like involving law enforcement at any step is a detriment to the student. And I want to make it very clear that especially with APD, they do a really good job. They do thorough investigations. They do not arbitrarily charge students with crimes unless it's criminal. Consider conducting a student safety assessment with all pertinent stakeholders to include SROs. So at our schools, they utilize student safety assessments. They're more commonly known as threat assessments or risk assessments. So you're assessing the student's behavior, actions, and then essentially estimating their risk or their likelihood of continuing to escalate behaviors. So that is something that our schools, a tool that they can use for similar situations. Consider an immediate search of the student's car, locker, bags, anything personal that they bring into the school. School staff have the authority to do this at any time. Law enforcement does not need to be present, and in fact, law enforcement cannot search our students' bags and lockers. School staff have to do it. Law enforcement can be there, but school staff have to be the ones to search it. Now, the second it becomes probable cause for something, law enforcement will immediately step in, but school staff are the ones that have the authority to do the searches. And in this situation, they would have found the journal in his backpack, which had explicit language in it. They would have found the gun in his backpack, and they would have been able to stop this before it ever happened if they had just done a search.
And Ashley, I think it's reasonable, our law is reasonable to believe that something has occurred. Ours is reason, and theirs is probable.
Yeah, yeah. And then the last kind of tool in our toolkit here at ASD is to consider an emergency suspension pending an investigation, and whether that's an internal or an external investigation. Again, it's another tool. It helps to decompress the situation, and really, it gives you more time to assess the entirety of the situation instead of trying to make a quick decision in the moment with the shooter and his parents there as well. It could have taken twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours. They could have extended it. They could have gotten law enforcement involved. That would have helped the investigation and helped the school really to make the right decision. But none of these steps were taken by the Oxford School District, and they definitely had opportunities to stop this before it happened. So these were the really big key takeaways I wanted to share with our staff, because we do have the authority to do all of these things.
And Madam President, just to finish up, again, it was kind of in that belief that when we know better, we do better, and when you know, you grow. And so we always take an after action on instances of safety, just to reflect in a mirror about our practices and keeping our students safe. So Ashley does keep us quite informed of everything, really. Ashley and Steve Brown lead our safety, and Steve is the Alice person and coordinator with APD.
All right. Wow, thank you, Ashley. Very informative. And I know a couple of board members have asked for a follow-up in light of, you know, what happened at Oxford. Yes, Member Higgins and then Paul Solomon.
Well, I appreciate this presentation, and it does reflect back to what happened at South High School ten years ago. And it was a similar situation where they had behaviors of a student that raised a lot of alarms. SROs checked, they checked the lockers. They went to the home with the parents and was able to check things there. He wasn't a risk factor that way. But the intervention carried forth what was short here, and it was very thorough and very successful. The only shortfall that we had was communication with parents. They heard about it. They didn't know what was being done, and that was the one area of concern. But the thing I think about, that we came out with workplace violence people here, was that the key to keeping schools safe is identifying the risk before it happens, not responding. And that's the counselors and the intervention that way. They just failed to follow up on it, but they had the right approach. And I think that has a lot to do with our funding of counselors and the importance of the role. When you look at safety, it just falls in that category. So I appreciate this overview. I knew it fell short, obviously, but I do think the school district in the past had run it well, from my experience. And the only question I have is just how much training do we put into it? I know we do a practice active shooter, but it's just making sure that every school and every new principal and all of the changes are really properly trained.
I guess I think this is a little bit along the same line as Member Higgins, and I know this is all still under investigation. I'm wondering if there was an indication that the decision to return the student to class came about primarily just from lack of staffing? Did someone really fully consider this and make the decision? Or was it a case of they did what they did, and everybody kind of had to move on? And I know they may not have determined that yet.
Based on everything I read, I mean, they had counselors, they had two counselors involved with both situations. They had the principal, and they had several other unnamed staff members. So I'm not sure if they were teachers or maybe assistant principals. But to my knowledge, it didn't seem like a staffing issue. I kind of kept going back to his behavior and how they felt really comfortable with how he was behaving, not like he was under stress or nervous or scared. He was really, he knew what to say, essentially, and that's really what made them drive their decisions, instead of taking these other steps that they really did have the authority to take.
Okay, other questions? Yeah, the second part is just the elephant in the room is kind of the masking issue. And so I just wanted to address some of the questions that came this evening. And it was referenced that a political decision was made, and I just want to give you the irony that when I initiated masking, it was also a political reason. So either the left or the right have accused me of politics, and I want to share that it's just not true. And if you want to know what I'm going to do when I retire, I'm going to spend it with that grandchild of mine in a judgment-free zone, because we forget often the last two years. This has been a process for which we have been engaged wholeheartedly from the get-go. We forget that we turned down the American Pediatrics Academy recommendation to get back in school last September, because we kind of only like to listen to what matches our own thoughts already. I mean, that's given in research. That's what we do. So I wanted to share that change is very difficult for our community. And what I've, when we did go out and ask about a month, you know, just, hey, talk to principals, what are they thinking? That if there was any change, we need to do it at semester or a large quarter, a large timing. Understanding that numbers had been reduced and have been reduced, and if you look at numbers in our schools, you know, almost fifty thousand people here, maybe twenty cases in a week, and through all of our schools, hundreds of schools, and nine hundred tests given every week, six hundred in our schools and about three hundred by the drive-in at Beacon, which is still at our schools, but our school nurses aren't doing it. Beacon's doing it, or Beech Tree, rather. That we looked at those numbers and said, "Well, we kind of said that we would look at this and relook at this, because as you can tell, not everybody's on the same page." But with the caveat that, hey, we're going to, I'm just as easy to call it one way as the other, because we just want to operate schools, and it has always been about operating schools. And as you've heard this evening and received in your emails, our community is very split on this. And we just had an assembly that isn't in an emergency anymore. Our city behaved in a way. And I mean, it's not to put people in danger. It was to face the reality of where we are today with the ability to make a decision either way. And so I just, I'm just surprised at what people forget. But I do understand that hurting people hurt people. And so I see the side of fear for themselves or their families. There's a lot of hurting going on in our community, and so I have empathy there, and I understand that. But there has never been, nor will there be, I mean, past experience is the best indicator of future behavior. And I believe that our past experience and the team in leading us through this is quite evident. And so we never stop adjusting and looking and figuring things out for a community that is quite divided. Education is our primary goal. We want schools to stay open. Teachers do a good thing when they're with kids. It's a good thing to have happen. So I just wanted to share that, because so many had had questions, whether I personally like masks or I personally don't. Whether I personally like this person or whether I personally don't. Nothing about this job is personal. I get that, but it is very serious, and I get that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Let's, questions for Dr. Bishop? Member, oh, I'm sorry. Member Jacobs and then Messons and then Higgins.
Sure, yeah. I guess a question and a comment first. Just from a procedural standpoint, could you walk the board through what information was considered as a part of the decision? And then specifically, if the Alaska chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics was, their guidance was considered as a part of it as well?
Sure. So if we have some team members that we sit around, just so you know, and we meet on cases and how to move forward and changes. And there was an indication, I think the board received quite a bit of email after the assembly made their changes. And so we were being hit over and over again, okay, there's no emergency in the city anymore. The hospitals are not overloaded. What are you going to do? And I just kind of, we waited to see. We wanted to look at our cases, and so we looked at our cases internally, where we were and the amount of testing we were doing without students having COVID. So, you know, for nine hundred cases or nine hundred tests, we were continuing to have very, very low positivity rates. We, specifically the American Pediatrics, know, but I want to share that throughout this, and just consequently, just this last Thursday or Friday, I made a decision with the team, seeing too many kids on close contacts being out of school, hundreds a week. And again, they would come back not positive. We made the decision then, this was the last time that the board questioned, "Why are you doing that? That's against CDC regs." That I made a determination that we're going to have testing in every school, and healthy people are going to stay in school, whether you're a teacher or a kid, an aide. So we tested our people to stay. And if you had symptoms, yes, you had to go home. You tested and went home, but if you didn't, you could stay. And just recently, while the provisions of the school district that they studied about tests to stay, CDC now recommends tests-to-stay policies. Those of us, just so you know, that are actually in schools, working with kids every day, have veered off from what medical, what is the medical gold star? We would still be at home, not physically in buildings, if we had the medical gold star. Do you remember, week after week, just put it off another two weeks, put it off another two weeks, put it off? I mean, that's where I had come from. And so for me, to make a call and then study that call to get everyone used to it, our community needs a lot of time to mull things over. It wasn't meant as a surprise. It was meant to spend time. And I see now the side of, wow, this was just a surprise for us, and it stresses us out. I get that. This has been stressful. But it was more about discussions and understanding with your own families. Everything about this COVID has been about assessing risk, not eliminating it. And time and time again, including last year, for those of you that weren't here, it was a major hill to climb to get these schools open for kids. I was sharing the suffering. Actually, a board member said to me, "Well, the data showed that more kids didn't commit suicide." And now, guess what the American Pediatrics said? Well, they weren't successful, which is a terrible thing to say, because of the manner in which they tried. Those that had access to weapons did that. So, yeah, there were a whole heck of a lot more kids hurting themselves last year, and we knew it from the inside, and we tried to get kids back. So I just want to say that this isn't to undo everything or to have fear or no fear. It's simply to look and say, wow, we are not doing too badly, and there's a group of people out there that assess their risks differently than others. And our city moved in a direction, a progressive assembly moved in a direction. And I was being charged to reevaluate, and that's what we did. And so we use our health team. We have our operations team. We have our instructional team that meet. And we just reserve the right to say, you know what? Today, we're going to do this, but I don't know about tomorrow, but I'm going to be ready to make the change. And I included that in the letter as well. But I understand the nervousness, because it's break. But really, I wanted to forecast early so that it wouldn't be over a weekend sometime. And, you know, I regret stressing people out. I mean, that's how we make the decisions, looking at our data. Do you have a follow-up, Mr. Jacobs?
Yeah, Madam President, thank you. Just a comment. And as I tried to relay during the work session related to the underlying memo that grant the administration authority on COVID mitigation, I see a number of Anchorage residents seeing the administration and the board as extremely linked. For better or for worse, I think the, our community saw the superintendent update as a board update at the same time as well. The underlying board memo specifically mentioned engaging the board in a reasonable amount of time prior to the decision being made. And in this case, I don't feel that I had that adequate notice. Within a few hours after the email had gone out, I was at community councils answering questions about a decision that I didn't have a role in and couldn't justify outside of what was in an email. And so I think that we missed an opportunity to address some of the missteps that I saw as a citizen during last year's pandemic and initial struggles, which was a lack of continuity between our respective bodies. I think we need to, we must do better going forward, and I trust the administration is going to do that. I think we've heard some significant and justifiable concerns regarding the plan. One follow-up question, if I might, before we move on, I guess, is a number of emails that we've received, as well as the number of folks who provided testimony, mentioned delaying the decision until holiday travel and related cases were known effectively until mid-January. Was that something the administration considered? Was that something the administration considered?
It absolutely was. And again, it was over the last 72 hours. Omicron is quite different than it was when we were discussing, that's how quickly things change. Even Dr. Fauci changed in three days, some of the things he said. So if I can be held in that regard. But yeah, we did. And the reason being for that waiting was that transition time. And the idea that, well, if we do two more weeks, if we do two more weeks, and just kind of pushing it, that what we found before is coming up with a time, having a timeline, and then deciding, okay, is this timeline, you know, reasonable or not? And it was just the idea of a normal transition, which was one of the requests that came from employees when they talked about, at schools, we had put out about a month ago, principals, what are you thinking? What do your staffs think? And that was some of the, you know, response. That was all prior, you know, 72 hours when the notice was sent. It was like, you know, this variant is here. And frankly, I think there's going to be variants the next 10 years. So, but that's why the letter said, if things change, so do our actions. And it seemed like that was picked up, but not much else. So, but I can understand that. It's kind of ironic that we want schools to be sure we have masks because of the Omicron variant, because millions of people are traveling. Like, life has moved on for those millions of people, and a lot of them are our own kids and our own teachers. And then we want schools then to be responsible on the back end. And so I'm not saying that, you know, waiting won't happen or, you know, things like that. Or, you know, I'm happy to do whatever, you know, the board would like. But it's interesting that the very behaviors that we're taking and want the liberty to take, we then put back on schools to, and that was last year too. And maybe it's a little bit of that feeling of, schools took a lot of burden for community. Children took a lot of the burden. They took it on their backs by not having schools. And so I take that as just a failure last year of not getting our young people back in school soon enough. So.
Member Lessons?
Thank you for those questions, Member Jacobs. Thank you for your sharing, your thought process. I want to be transparent. On November 10th, I sent Dr. Bishop an email and said, in my ebullience over pediatric vaccines being available and ASD doing a commendable job in making those available to the community. I said, I am interested in a plan for that, what is the off-ramp for our masking? About two weeks later, I got my first, you know, notification of this new thing called Omicron. And I remember sitting at a breakfast table, eating breakfast and thinking, oh no, here we go again. So I recognize that it's hard to have a perfect roadmap with an endemic virus that will mutate for a very long time. That said, what I didn't hear tonight, well, before I go there, I have also received an email from a school nurse suggesting that there have been hiccups in our ability to test U2 courier service availability. And I was asked, I'm hoping that you could speak to that.
Sure, so the hiccup occurred the last three days of school. And if nurses wanted to continue to test, they could. But the hiccup was in our courier service, we utilized our busing system to do that. And we're no longer doing that, putting them on Reliant buses. And so those last three days before we could get our new system, because it is pretty in-depth, if nurses, if they had kids that needed testing, we were going to send them to a different school or to the drive-up testing that we run at our schools. But I would say, I'll let Jen Petronas and Kathy Bell, majority of nurses just chose to continue to test and take it. They delivered the closest school to that had the courier service, they just delivered it to those schools. So would you guys mind coming up and sharing? But it was the last, maybe two or three days of school that we pulled the bus service off of it and had to regroup.
Through the board president to Member Lessons. Dr. Bishop is correct, for the last three days before the holiday break, since we had a disruption in the courier service, the nurses were asked if they wanted to continue testing. They were able to either bring the test that they did to one of the already existing testing sites or they could bring them themselves to the Beechtree Lab, which is in South Anchorage, and get compensation. The majority of the nurses did choose to continue testing.
Does that answer your?
May I ask, moving forward, again, it's difficult to predict the future. Do you have confidence in ASD's ability to provide testing without unforeseeable interruptions?
I will have Kathy Bell and Tom Roth talk about the solutions to the testing, if you'd like.
Through the president to Member Lessons. Yes, yes. We absolutely intend to sustain the testing and the courier service that allows us to do that. I'll be the first to admit, it has been a little bit challenging here this last week. Just to give you the history, we have been using Reliant, they were willing partners. But there is federal law that does limit an organization that is not specifically in the medical service field to transport what is considered to be a, you know, what could be a medically, a medical hazard material. That being said, we thought it best simply to take them off from that role. So as Ms. Petronas has mentioned, we are enlisting the support of our nurses. Concurrently, we are receiving support from Beechtree, one of our other contracting partners. They're picking up its sites as well as our warehouse folks, our Teamsters. So to get to it, absolutely. We are all in on this. We will not let the mission fail.
Thank you. Member Higgins?
Thank you. I'm disappointed by a number of reasons on this. I looked at all the websites and I looked at all the predictions and everything else that was going on at the time when this announcement was done. And everybody said this was going to blow up. The numbers said January, February were going to be the high point. I looked today and 73% of all new cases out there are directly related to the new variant. And we don't know what's going to come in the future. But we know January, February is going to be higher than what it's been in any other area. Being ahead of that a little bit makes sense. We're short staffed, we're going to have people out. We've got, the spread of it is going to go real fast. And we've got about, in the country, it's about 39% not vaccinated. And this state's not doing real good. It was doing real good in the beginning. And I don't know the numbers, but the impact is going to be significant. So, yeah, but that's a secondary issue. The first primary is, I was kind of hoping we would be discussing it beforehand and not having to second guess and then come back and have to make a decision in regards to this issue, to override a decision made. I really don't even want to be in that position at all. We talked about following science, that's why we were doing it, that's how we defended it in the beginning. Now we're not following that, in my opinion, because we're hearing, this is not the time to listen. Everybody's tired of it, but you got coming back from holidays, you're going to have a variant that's a whole lot more contagious than previous. It's going to impact the hospitalization at a high level. And now we're reviewing it after the fact when all the data that we used for the first decision doesn't support a reversal of it. And it doesn't matter to me, I appreciate that you've, you're kind of throwing them into the group to say they supported this. And I don't know if that's fair or not fair, but this is a group that needed to be involved too. And in regards to the voice of the public and the issues associated. I think this is a serious safety issue. I see this as a serious, it's not a good process being followed at all that we are having to now review it and I believe make a decision in regards to this that will direct, make a decision on whether or not this goes forward as it's done. I wish we had had this communication before that. I don't see the data supporting it. I know the assembly went off, but they may come back in, they're dealing with the general public. But we've got a different arena here. And it just doesn't make sense in a closed environment that we're going to subject these kids coming back from holidays, they're saying this is going to blow up, and waiting till afterwards and watch all this situation spread in closed schools. Because we just feel like the data from the American Pediatric Association, the data from CDC, we can just kind of ignore that because we want to get back to normal. That's, I'm just disappointed and I feel strongly that that's where the position we're in. And I believe that's the action we need to take.
So I just wanted to, so the data is on our dashboard, so we can take a look at our cases per school. And that was considered, just to let you know. And I'm not sure who you mentioned that I got someone involved. These health professionals are part of the team, the decision-making team. So I wasn't sure if you were referring to the audience earlier or... I don't make decisions unilaterally, if that was your assumption. These are valued members of our team. In fact, we're going to be very sad to lose Jennifer Petronas. She's becoming the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club. And she has led us from the very beginning when no one really knew what the definition or what the heck was COVID. So she will be greatly missed as our senior director of health services. And she comes with high qualifications, as well as obviously our nurse coordinator Kathy Bell, who's been a school nurse as well. So the decisions made at my table are not void of the voices at the table, Mr. Higgins, to be clear.
Continuing on, the, Member Holloman, did you have comments just coming around?
I do, and I really appreciate the explanation by the superintendent about her choices and factors in it. There's some I think are unfortunate. I understand the desire to make a decision when we've got a two-week break. I am thinking back to one of the decisions we made was based on the idea that children in school generally are in a safer environment than children that are not in school when they're at home. They're seeing more people, they're mixing in places where there is no mitigation. And unfortunately, that's what we've got coming. We've got two weeks of kids being, to borrow a classroom phrase, free range. And we have a variant that's out there. The trend right now in Anchorage is good. It's been trending down, it seems paused for a moment, but it hasn't gone up as far as I can tell. And if it continues, we're in great shape by January, I think. Except that there are these changes happening out there that are unpredictable. And I totally understand, I think, some of the angst that you've had in that there's always somebody saying it's about to get worse. And if that's what we listen to, we never get out of this. And I don't know that it will be. I think it's possible that by mid-January, we will be okay in Anchorage. I think it's possible we could be on a spike and be going up. My big concern is that kids will be gone for two weeks, things will be happening. And we come back with an important mitigation method gone, and we have to wait and see what happens. And to me, that's the dangerous part. I think we need that mitigation in place, like it has been during that period, while we see what happens in Anchorage and while we see what happens in our buildings. And then if things stay the way we hope they go, be step back from it. I do believe that masking is something that we can step back from really rapidly. But like almost everything that involves an action going forward, is more difficult. If parents find out on Sunday afternoon that they need masks for their kids for the morning, that's really a problem. If we find out on Sunday afternoon that we don't need masks tomorrow, that's great. We can rip them all off and throw them up in the air and go have a, go have a whole lot of fun. I would like to offer a resolution and say that it's a sense of the board that our current masking policy remain in effect until at least January 15th. At that point, I'll wait and see if I have a second before I speak to it.
Could you finish reading it? Could you read it again?
Say that again.
Could you just state your motion again?
It is a sense of the board that our current masking policy remain in effect until at least January 15th.
Is there a second? I know. Yeah. I don't see a second. I'll second that. Moved in second that the mask, the sense of the board is that the mask mandate stay in place until January 15th. Want to speak to your?
And briefly, I'll just say, this lets everybody continue doing what we've been doing and what we've been doing very well. And then it gives us enough weeks after break to see if we've got a problem on our hands or not. If things are trending like they're trending right now, I will be delighted to see the policy go away. But I do think it's critical when we return from break, everybody comes back from all the places they're going, that we have mitigation, as much mitigation as possible in place. Thank you.
Once I see it, I'd like to move to amend that motion. Member Wilson?
While we're giving Katie a minute. Sorry about that. My concern is really, I don't want to take the risk of having to close any schools, having any kids, not with in-person learning, having any of our staff, which are all, I mean, we have staff shortages now. So the concern is, I really want our staff, as Member Holloman said, to come back to school, knowing those mitigations are in place, to feel comfortable enough to come back to their classrooms and not worry about contracting COVID or any of its variants. So with the holiday travel, with the kids being in school or out of school for the next few weeks, I would also like to see that mitigation in place so that we can continue to see where the city goes with, and see how our COVID rates stand up. So I also would like to get to the point where we don't have to be wearing masks. Our students and staff do not have to be masked in school. But I want to make sure that coming back from that break and people traveling and all that we know is going to happen, that there's that safety issue and that sense of calm and confidence before we move on with this.
Thank you. I think everyone's had it. So if you, I'm not speaking for or against the motion, but I'm just, we already have a process where we are reviewing, we are updated every two weeks. I get that the, I get that the January 3rd date is the issue right now. And I also, I just want to also point out that in that memo, it did say, in the update, it did say that things would be reevaluated. So I'm just, I just want to make that clear. So now, Member Lessons, you said you had an amendment to the motion.
Correct. Katie, have you received it?
I emailed it to you. Sure, I'll read it.
Can you read it?
Yes. I move to amend the motion, such that I would read. It is the sense of the board that effective December 20th, 2021, the school board will direct the superintendent to require that the Anchorage School District continues to utilize all 2021 to 2022 Start Strong COVID-19 mitigation strategies through February 1st, 2022. At that time, the superintendent shall use her pre-existing operational authority to alter or maintain the suite of mitigation measures entailed in the Start Strong policy based on input, including the Anchorage area risk factor as measured in the number of cases per 100,000 persons within both the last seven and 14 days and local hospital capacity. per 100,000 persons within both the last seven and 14 days, and local hospital capacity and input from local, state, and federal health authorities, including the Alaska State Hospital and Nursing Home Association, and the Alaska chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics.
I'm doubtful. Yeah, I'm not sure I, but that is, is there a second? Not seeing a second then.
A question on clarification. Does this establish that it needs to come back to the board for this to be reversed? Or does it just delay the process and say what it should be based on?
It delays the date that Member Holloman mentioned, two more weeks, because we know that there is a lag between when families are moving around, when cases due to Omicron, which is exponentially contagious, might spike and would allow for us to better understand any inflection point in our hospitalization rates. Right? If we remember back at the beginning of COVID, the point was to flatten the curve. That's something that I'm sort of thinking about in the back of my mind, knowing what we know about Omicron right now. It's my understanding that this ultimately recognizes Dr. Bishop's authority to make decisions for the district, although it does for the next month through the end of January, say, let's stay the course. And it, it more specifically notes a couple of data points. Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. Member Higgins had a question. We don't have a second yet.
Yeah, I, I asked that question and I appreciate the clarification. I would like to propose that if you modified it to include that prior to implementing a mask policy.
We still need to get a motion to have this discussion. You guys are, we're missing a piece here.
Point of information.
So, yes.
I, I guess I would like to see the amendment written out. We don't, I don't think we currently have that yet. Could we have an addees while Katie gets that information updated?
We need a second, and there is no second to Member Lessons. I, I don't, first of all, the motion is so, I mean, I don't, I guess I, if there is no second, we do not have the discussion, is what I'm trying to remind the board of. And I do not hear or see a second. So we are back to, it is the sense of the board that our current masking policy remains in effect until at least January 15th. That is the one, the one, that's what's before us. With the understanding that we will still, we will still continue, I just want to make sure you know, we still will continue with the updates. So, Member, speaking to the motion or what, of making a new one?
If it has a second, then I'll make my motion to make a change then.
And what is your motion?
I, I would like to change the wording to, from, let me see if I can.
The motion before you is right up there on the screen.
Okay. I would like to change it to say, in the sense of the board, that our current masking policy remain in effect until at least February 1, and that a change in the best policy be approved by the board.
Okay. Second, is there a second? Second. All right, the amendment is to, the amendment to the motion is, it is a sense of the board that our current masking policy remain in effect until at least February 1 and be approved by the board. Is that what you said, sir?
Right.
Well, I think, so we already have policy that, okay, that, that is approved by the board, and there was a second, so, did you want to speak to your motion?
I, I do. I, this, this, this change based upon the current way we're doing it was done without board involvement at all. I was disappointed because when we talked about, in, in August, when we went through this process, I know we talked about wanting to be involved, and that was an issue and concerns about best science information and the like. I want us to work together with the superintendent, and I want to be involved in this decision. This is a, a significant public decision. We're an elected body, and we're supposed to represent the public, the students, the teachers, and the staff and all. And I want us to be working together, not delegating this decision, because if they did, we go right back again, January 16th, and it will be passed again, and we will be discussing it in the next board meeting. And so I just feel strongly that the board needs to take its responsibility and ownership for this decision.
Okay, thank you, Member Higgins. Other comments? Yes, Member Holloman?
Thinking back to one of our previous meetings, one, one of the things that guided us in not being as assertive as we might have been is that we do want the masking policy to end as soon as it can. I'll admit, I disagree with the superintendent, even though she probably will better inform to me on this, but, but I feel strongly about it to say that it should continue. But I'll be honest, if, if January 20th is the date, I'd like for it to end then. If, if the community transmission is low and things are healthy in our schools, I want it to go away sooner rather than later. But I do feel like we, we just have to wait until our kids are back and have been back for a week or two, where we see some testing, see whether people have symptoms, and then make that call. But I, I, I hope it happens before February 1st. I, I don't know, but I, I would like for us to stick with an earlier date.
Member Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I support the intent regarding the, the intent of the amendment in wanting the board to be involved, or more involved than it was in this decision. And I think the underlying memo, which delegated authority to the administration, clearly required it. And it, unfortunately, it didn't occur. And so I think we have language that supports the board being further involved regarding changes to the mitigation plan. I think the language specifically states a reasonable amount of time before any public notice is sent. And I also want to share the concern raised by Vice President Holloman, that I, I do appreciate the flexibility of the memorandum, which is why it ultimately earned my support that the administration is here every day, board members aren't. And if February 1st is a good day, that's great. But if January 20th is a, is a, is a day that makes sense, that, that's, I don't know what's best, that's fine too. So I'm still interested in hearing feedback from others, but I'm not sure that this is the perfect iteration as it stands right now.
Any other discussion? So if I understand you correctly, you, you're not comfortable with the February 1st date? Because that?
I, I think, yeah, Madam President, to clarify, I think the intent of the motion or the amendment to the, the sense of the board is proposed by Vice President Holloman has already been accomplished by underlying board policy. I think what we have today is the board stating that, or at least members of the board stating that a sense of the board exists that we're not comfortable with how, with the proposed changes to the mitigation plan. And to me, that speaks to, one, the process identified in the underlying memo not being adhered to, and then, two, further conversation which needs to occur. And so I think I would support the underlying motion, but the amendment, I think, handicaps or restricts, is overly restrictive where we lose some of the flexibility, which was a benefit to the original memo. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, Member Higgins.
What, what if we just went with something like this sense of the board that our current masking policy remain in effect until approved by the board? If, if we, January 20th is a good date, that's fine. I just feel like the public expects us to play a role in review in this issue. It didn't, it, it didn't go well this time, in my opinion, and I feel like the board has to take ownership. So I'm not worried about the date. I'm worried about the board involvement. And if the numbers don't come out great, that's great. And if we can improve it, January 15th, that's great. But all the numbers say it's going to be later in January, it's going to be February. These timeframes is where it's going to, going to go up and it's going to boom. And I'm just basing it upon best science, what's going on all over the place in the world, in the world 48. So if you, a friendly change would be just change in, in effect until approved by the board, if that would be a preference of the board.
So that, that was, that was your amendment in the first place?
Right.
So you are proposing that?
Proposing a amendment to the amendment.
Oh, you're changing, you're just changing your amendment, right?
I'm just changing my amendment.
Okay, he's just changing it. Take out that word first.
That would be supported by the second. Change it so that it's in effect until approved by the board. Then it can come earlier, it can come later.
It would have. Okay. Other comments?
At the point of clarification, I believe I would need, since I seconded that, I believe that I would need to, I actually would like to withdraw my seconding of that because I believe it's in contradiction to the Memo 31 that we approved, which says that we expect the administration to implement and revise the plan as deemed necessary. So we're expecting the administration to revise the plan.
And we're changing it tonight.
We're changing it. So there's, we're, this motion, as amended until the board approves it, is, is not in line with the Memo 31 that we approved back in October. So that's the logical trouble that I have at the moment. So I would have to rescind my second based on that language.
Okay. So is there a second?
So the original memo, the amendment stands.
The original amendment stands. And that amendment is, it is a sense of the board that our current masking policy remain in effect until, and I would like to offer an amendment.
Madam President, before we do an amendment to the amendment, is this really an amendment? It's a sense of the board.
It is.
There's no main motion to amend. I think it's, I think it's a sense of the board, that's fine, but that's a main motion, actually.
Right. But in terms of what the sense of the board is, so the sense of the board is stated, and that's it. It says a sense of the board that our current masking policy remain in effect, period.
Okay, so the current motion is drafted in, on the board before us electronically. It shouldn't say amendment number one. It should just say motion.
Yeah, all right. Point well taken. Thank you, Member Donnelly.
So are we back to February 1st or just?
He withdrew the February 1st. Kelly withdrew her motion. We don't have, so we're back to the main motion, Andy's motion. And I would like to amend Andy's motion or Andy's motion to just end it, that it remains in effect and we go back to our process. We have a process. The process is a two-week update. We have a policy. I think that's all we need to do tonight. I mean, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Sorry.
Second.
So I would like the amendment to read is a sense of the board that our current masking policy remain in effect. Right, the motion, I'm sorry, the main motion.
Can you take amendment number one off?
Yeah, take amendment off, because this is just a fifth of the board. Oh, until he, until she goes back. Any, any, that was seconded by? Remain in effect, period.
Point of order, the original motion's been amended twice now and?
Well, once?
No, mine withdrew.
He withdrew his because Kelly withdrew the motion. So we're back to yours, the original motion.
The screen right now is not the original motion. Okay.
All right, so, Member Jacobs.
Just for clarification, I want to get understanding, so the motion you have that we remain in effect, the superintendent can reverse that based upon additional data. And, and what would be different about it? What's different? This time, she made the decision to change it without talking to the board. What is different in the future if she decides to change it January 1st and change it for January 3rd? Does she have that authority still?
Well, Member Lessons, do you still have the policy up? Because I think we just have to, the Memo 31?
Memo 31.
I can pull it up, but I don't have it up yet. So Memo 31, do you want me to read what I had selected? The board expects the administration to implement, dot, 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 and revise the smart start, revise the plan as deemed necessary and as informed by evolving community conditions and gu, and guidance provided by local, state, and federal medical and public health professionals.
And, and there's a part about board input?
I would have to pull up the whole.
Oh, okay, all right. But there, she, and I understand, I understand that, that the policy, there was not, the timeliness of it, I, I get that. And I, I, so what's going to keep the super, we already have a memo.
Do it again.
We already have the memo that gives her the authority, but with notice to us, and that notice didn't happen. So I think we still need, we're talking about it today. I mean, it happened, it came, but it didn't include any discussion with the board. And I don't know if Memo 31, if somebody could pull it up, because Memo 31 did not require that there be discussion, I can't remember what it requires.
Yes, may I read it?
Yes, please.
Okay. The board, consistent with, so I'll just read from the beginning. The board's goal is to keep ASD buildings safe for our students to flourish and learn in a full-length school day and continue accelerated learning in person while also allowing for full participation in activities, clubs, and social learning opportunities. The board has reviewed all components of the 2021, 2022 Return to School Operational Guidelines Start Strong Plan as formulated and proposed by Dr. Bishop and her leadership team. The board and administration have confidence in the district's ability to safely mitigate COVID-19 and keep ASD symptom-free. Consistent with the superintendent's pre-existing operational authority, the board expects the administration to implement the 2021 to 2022 Return to School Operational Guidelines Start Strong Plan and revise the plan as deemed necessary and as informed by evolving community conditions and guidance provided by local, state, and federal medical and public health professionals. Furthermore, the administration should facilitate regular updates to the board and ensure adequate notice is provided to the board prior to public announcement of revisions to the plan. The Anchorage School Board is cognizant of the COVID Delta, COVID-19 Delta variant, which is rapidly spreading across the globe and is circulating across Alaska at a high rate in Anchorage community.
All right, thank you for that. Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So that's the language I spoke to earlier regarding requirement of reasonable notice. I am comfortable with the motion as presented, understanding that the superintendent, I believe, is, is hearing the board's intent to be more involved prior to any future modifications to the plan. The superintendent by nature is our employee. I don't foresee future concerns regarding the, the change. And so I think the language of the memo can stand on its own without further modification, which would potentially be a conflict with what we've already adopted. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Bishop had her hand up.
Yeah, I actually do have a question. Notification and involvement really have two different connotations, and I think that is the discussion here. So I had been operating on prior notification of lots of things and how we do it with the board. And so if that would like to change and, you know, more time, I, I get it, but involvement and notification have different connotations to me.
Okay, Member Higgins, and then we'll come back to Lessons.
So let me just see if I have clarification, that if the superintendent decides to change this again, February 1, that you provide notice to us in time before a board meeting so that we can at least have a discussion with you? so that we can at least have a discussion with you before it gets implemented? Would that, is that a final decision made? Or am I missing that?
Could you ask the question again?
If you decide at February one you wanted to implement a change and you announce it to be effective February second before we have a board meeting, are we going to get notice before a board meeting so we can weigh in before it gets implemented? Is what I'm asking.
Can you, or does like, I mean?
Is it your intent, shall I say, to let us know in time for us to be able to respond if we have concerns, if we haven't discussed it? Ideally, you'd bring and say, look, this is what I'm thinking about doing next week because these are the numbers. But if you decide to announce it to the world, what you want to do before the board gets a chance to weigh in, will we at least get enough notice so we can have an opportunity in a board meeting to have a discussion?
So what is the notice you would like, or prior to a board meeting?
Yeah, so we would have a chance to weigh in on the decision if we disagreed, so we could
And that could be delayed a couple of weeks with our schedule. But if notice is given in Board Connect or in I mean, what we've, what we've been doing has been working because we've been getting it. But this time, there was a substantial change, right? And so we've been, she's done what she's always done. She's given us an update, but it did have a change that the board had not, had not even seen because of the timing. So I, so I think, you know, the update, we know we're going to get an update every two weeks. But what you're saying, if we're getting an update every two weeks and we've got to meet before we implement the update, that's what you're asking? I think that's going to, I don't know how that's going to
What would, Madam President, what would help your superintendent? Because obviously, in following that, I did not do what the board had asked, given how I interpreted that. So I suggest the board be crystal clear in your expectations of timing, if that's what you expect.
Because that's the issue right now, is the timing. I mean, we've gotten updates for the last year and a half, almost every, the first and the fifteenth. But there was a substantial change. And then there was limited notice, which made it even more complex. Member Lesens, and then we're going to go to Member Higgins.
At the risk of offering another amendment, I think we could clarify this timing issue by providing a small amendment to the motion before us and have it read. It is a sense of the board that our current masking policy remain in effect. Period. The board will be notified at least twenty-four hours in advance of any substantial change. I mean no and I guess notification would be through email.
Yeah. Okay, so is that second? I'll second it. I'll second it. Go on, Member Higgins.
So yeah, I guess I want to so I'll echo something that Member Higgins said earlier regarding meetings. And I think this was actually addressed in governance when memo thirty-one went through committee and that memo thirty-one originally was much more strongly worded that required these changes to go through a board meeting. And the discussion that I recall occurring was that we were going to waive that requirement because it gave the administration increased flexibility. And the intent of the administration at that time was unless there was an emergent public health need to modify the plan, we would be getting those updates at meetings. And so that's my recollection, or at least what I understood the intent of those changes to be. And why I was comfortable with removing that meeting requirement was an exercise of trust in the administration, which is why I was disappointed when I got an email three hours before the change was announced. And so I think absent an emergent need to make a change, having it addressed at a meeting where there's an opportunity for the public engagement, an opportunity for the board to understand the decision makes sense. And it's, I mean, I think the memo would allow for it too, so, thank you.
Okay, so the motion before us, it is a sense of the board that our current masking policy remain in effect. The board will be notified by email at least twenty-four hours in advance of any substantial change. Yes, Member Holloman.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to it again. Word notification matters, but I think as Member Higgins pointed out, we realize that the superintendent really runs the district and it kind of has to be that way. The January fifteenth date I chose because we have had a lot of concern from parents and staff members, that they feel like coming back in January is an unknown right now. And I think it is, given the presence of a variant that's raising havoc in a lot of other states. So it's primarily notice to the community that uses our schools. There are people that said they would feel like they would have to pull their kids if masking is not in place when we return to school. This gives a couple of weeks where they know we're doing status quo until we see the trends. Still allows for the early termination of it if there is not a trend that's concerning. I have a lot of confidence that if transmission in the community is spiking upwards and we see sick kids arriving in our buildings during the first week or so, I'm willing to bet fifty bucks that the superintendent will continue our masking policy and other mitigation measures in that case. And at the same time, if there's not that trend, I want her to have the ability to end it as soon as possible because there are a lot of us that hate it, but see the necessity for it. So I still feel like the date is important so that members, staff members and families know that there's going to be a period of mitigation. And then after that, we're back into the great unknown again, where we're looking and seeing what's going on.
I'll respond to Member Holloman. I'm supportive of a date, but I think that January fifteenth is just a little too soon. That's why I was comfortable with February first. It gives us a good month.
I'd just point out that it doesn't require the removal on January fifteen. It just means it absolutely will be in place that long at least. But I can understand your point.
Yes, Dr. Bishop.
Sure, I'm happy to comply and really to speak with Member Holloman. I didn't come to this board nor the community. Our COVID team, when we put the masks in place, we didn't come and ask permission. So just to clearly state, you know, the opposite of, we always think, you know, moving forward of what we want and how we wanted to have once decisions aren't made. But in speaking about what would happen, I mean, I didn't ask the board to put masking in place, although I think there was quite a bit of consternation at the beginning of the year when we started this way. So just to share that point.
Okay, what is a sense of the board? This is the fourth, fifth reiteration of our sense? Sense of the board that our current masking policy remain in effect. The board will be notified by email at least twenty-four hours in advance of any substantial change.
Madam President?
Oh, yes.
So is this the actual main motion as it's written before us now?
Yes.
Well, then I guess that would
Wait, this is, this is, this is actually, Member Holloman made the first motion. This is, this is the amendment.
Yeah, this is an amended motion.
Right, this is an amended.
All right. So discussion would be limited to this particular proposal?
We're not doing an amendment. It is a sense of the board, so we're just trying to track the different variations.
If this was voted down, we would go back to the original motion.
Right.
That was my question.
Yes. All right, so we're just going to, we're not voting, we're just going to do a show of hands, all in favor of the motion, because this is not a, do we, oh, it is? You got it in there? Okay. All right, so
Clear, if this passes, then it still needs to be voted on as a main motion. And if it fails, then we go to Member Holloman's proposal.
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. Guys, I'm getting me. Okay. Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
You guys vote down now?
Oh.
So you can give her
I thought you said you were going to vote.
I was, but Katie wanted to do it the other way. Katie rules.
Can I just vote? No.
No. Nope.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
No. We got you. Who else? Okay, okay, that motion fails, three to four. So that takes us back to the original. She's got to find Andy's. That was the January fifteenth date. Okay, and here you have it. We're back to where we were an hour ago.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
May I speak to the motion? Thank you. You know, we went through the last couple of years. I think we kept our students out of school way too long last year. I understand all the pressure the board and the superintendent were under. And I really appreciate the superintendent's remarks tonight. There were a lot of unknowns. I was advocating that we should have gone back to school much sooner than we did. And I think we've had the mask mandate too long this year already. Most of our private schools have very successfully not required mandatory masking in this very community. Matsu never went to mandatory masking. They're not doing it now. Keen Eye did not have mandatory masking. And the other largest school district, Fairbanks, they have recently gone away from mandatory masking and went to voluntary masking, just as the superintendent has proposed for us to do. So we're standing out there pretty much on our own for this part of Alaska. No, we've had no fatalities of school-aged children that I know of from COVID. More children nationally die annually of the seasonal flu than die of COVID. And we don't require our kids to wear masks for the seasonal flu. Omicron and Omicron is less dangerous than the original or the current Delta variant. It's more infectious, but it's not as dangerous. So the number of infections is not the key data point here. The key data point is the seriousness of illnesses. And that's not happening with Omicron. You know, I hear a lot of assertions that data supports mandatory masking, but I think the studies that people have relied on, and especially the initial one that this district relied on to go to masking after a very successful summer not doing it, was faulty. I think that Massachusetts incident was in no way justified us going to mandatory masking at this point of time. And I defy anybody to explain why that incident justified us going to mandatory masking. There were, there's been a lot of studies saying that masking doesn't work. I do think there's a very, very low possible impact of masking on transmission. But it's not, I think the downside to it is greater than any upside that it presents. I just simply disagree that there's any kind of volume of data supporting not masking. There's, clearly, there's been mixed, very influential data to the opposite. And I think it's very instructive that states who had bans on masking, states such as Florida and other states that had statewide bans on mandatory masking, are now having lower infection rates than the states that went deep into mandatory masking a year ago or this year. Those states are not experiencing the high level of infection in some of the states that were big on masking. So even some school districts in Florida that went to court to fight for being able to mandate masking have now said, we're not masking, we're not doing mandatory masking anymore. So they were totally in favor of mandatory masking, so much that they went to court to try to fight for it. Now they've made their own decision based on the data and the evidence that, well, it's time to stop doing it. So I agree with the superintendent that if, you know, if we were just trying to just be perfect and prevent any infection of any kind, well, then we're never going to get back to normality in our schools. I mean, this is just, I agree, our kids have been bearing the burden in this community of the anti-COVID effort. And now, our very, you know, nobody can argue that this assembly is some sort of conservative bastion. It's a very progressive assembly. It's just recently said no more city mandate for masking. Why should our children bear this burden that the assembly has now decided we're not going to have on the community? So I just think we, you know, too much is being done on our kids in school. Too much burden's been put on them. It's been incredibly harmful and difficult for our children over the last couple of years. And it's time, at this point, I support the superintendent's decision to go back to where we, what we did this summer, very, very successfully, with just letting parents make this decision, make their decision about what's best for their kids. If people feel, you know, endangered by it, I mean, they can get inoculated. We have vaccines, that's what the vaccines are supposed to do. Now we're getting boosted. And they can, you know, utilize masking and protocols themselves. I think there's a strong argument that made, made that our kids are safer in schools than they are almost anywhere else. And there shouldn't have to be a mandate in schools for this if the parents feel that it's not what's best for their kids. I'm also very concerned that we haven't been, and I predicted this, Madam President, you might remember months ago, we're worried that it's going to be hard for the bureaucracy to be nimble enough to really address individual cases when parents really come forward with legitimate concerns about mandatory masking of their child in our schools. And we heard the horror stories here from parents of what happened to their kids. It was very emotional and really had a huge impact on me, how difficult it was for parents to get very legitimate exceptions to mandatory masking. I was especially concerned about the children with disabilities and special needs that were suffering under this mandate and that we weren't being flexible enough to really address those concerns. So I think it's time that this community follow the lead of Fairbanks, Keen Eye, Matsu, and the Anchorage Assembly and get away from mandatory masking. Let's let the authority go back to the parents in this.
Thank you, Member Donnelly. Member Holloman, and then Lesens, and then Wilson.
Well, there are a couple of key points there that I think we need to look at. I don't know that you can see historical data on the dashboards, but I spent quite a bit of time looking at the dashboards for Anchorage, Keen Eye, and Matsu. And what I saw were, in Matsu and in Keen Eye, is a lot of shutdown classrooms. I saw absentee rates twenty, twenty-two, twenty-five, thirty percent some days, while Anchorage was experiencing twelve, fourteen, maybe while Anchorage was experiencing twelve, fourteen, maybe fifteen. To say that they didn't have masking and they didn't have problems washes by the fact that we had more kids in school. We had our kids actually attending. They may not have shut down buildings, and they may not have had a mass outage. But their kids were somewhere else for some reason. I'm gonna guess a lot of them were sick, but there's no real way to know for sure. But it's definitely the case that with mitigation, we had a higher percentage of our kids in school more of the time with less disruption to parents than either Kenai or Matsu. So I don't want to mimic their experience. The Assembly is talking about a requirement in public places, or out in public, or in public buildings. We get kids together by the dozens for hours a day in rooms that have some ventilation, may not have the greatest ventilation. They certainly weren't designed with COVID in mind. It's just a different circumstance. And we are talking about a regulation just in our buildings. We're not trying to make people wear masks at home. We're not trying to make them wear them in the grocery store. But we are talking about those situations where we have kids together, that if there's a kid in that room that's positive for COVID, and other kids are gonna be around them for an hour or an elementary, maybe for several hours, we're putting some mitigation in place that makes it less likely that that disease can spread to other children and hence not spread to other families. So again, you know, given the trend we've got right now, the Assembly's position makes sense to me. If it changes, I think we'll see another battle over it. But they're controlling something that's a very different circumstance than what we're doing. Florida has a very stunning death rate over the past year. And so they're doing a little better now. A lot of their people that are susceptible to COVID are dead. I don't wanna emulate that either. We did a lot of mitigation, and it never got real bad here. I think that's something to celebrate. Florida, by the way, has a sharp uptick right now. They are on an upward trend that's been going on for over a week. Texas is on an upward trend. South Dakota has maintained a moderately high level of infection for months now. And it's not going up, it's not going down, it's just continuing. So again, the idea that these other states that avoided mitigation somehow skipped out, it's just not true. South Dakota took a huge economic hit, and they kind of famously avoided doing any mitigation. But their plants and everything's still closed. Their workforce got decimated. They still had the issues. I do think it's important that people realize a lot of the damage that's been done has not been done by policy, it was done by a disease. And I'll agree that the overbearing policy makes it worse. Policy that falls short makes it worse. And knowing exactly where the sweet spot is, unfortunately, there's no fluorescent paint that lights it up for people to light up and see. But yeah, I'm glad we didn't follow the example of Matsu or Kenai. I'm glad we didn't follow the example of Florida. I spent a little bit of time in Hawaii, feeling pretty fortunate about it. The compliance with mitigation is stunningly high in a state where people can be outside and separated from each other. The incidence remains remarkably low. And they're still maintaining mitigation in the face of continued low numbers and a success at containing it. I have to say that I think what we've done has an excellent track record. The fact that we didn't kill off a bunch more Alaskans, I'm glad about that. I'm glad we didn't take that other pathway and have a higher death rate that got completely out of control. We crested right to the point of overwhelming our health system. But we managed to stay just a little bit under it because, like you say, this is with us. We can't prevent it. I don't think anybody thinks the goal is a disease-free or infection-free society. No, we're never gonna get there. But we avoided overwhelming our systems. And that's particularly important in a state where you can't drive to the next state or the next big city. We were out of school for a while, but we've been back and we've been functioning real well. And all we're doing in this case is we're really talking about two weeks. I know it's a month off into the future, but the reality is we're talking about kids wearing masks for two weeks while we see what comes back from winter break. So I hope people will provide that much time, and we'll see what happens.
Thank you. Member Lessons, and then Wilson.
Thank you. I appreciate the reflection on what has happened in other districts and states. I have a logistical question for Dr. Bishop, and maybe it's a staff question. What is ASD's capacity to enhance the transparency of our COVID dashboard? I know that the Matsu has a number of other metrics available to families that have helped them make decisions. Member Holloman referenced, you know, the absence rate, you know. Is their ability to beef that up, to emulate a little bit more information about what may be going on at our schools? And specifically, I'm thinking about site-based cases identified as infectious while at school, a seven-day site-based count of all reported cases, total cases maybe since January 1st, like if we reset the clock. Site-based absence rates, those are just some of the metrics that are on the Matsu's dashboard. And of course, that would require technological wizardry and people power. But I think that one thing I've heard and read in all these emails that we've received, that people do want information so that they can better understand the risks, maybe for their own family. And, you know, that might mean pivoting to virtual. Or maybe that will mean it's okay to go to school. But I think that families want information. And again, this is my parent hat. I want consistency. This speaks to the yearning for information.
I would bring that back to the team. And I know our, prior to this time, and your prior request on asking about close contacts, was the ability to get that detailed information would come from the classroom, and we didn't want to put another burden on the classroom. We can merge our attendance data by school. That's on a different website. You know, I mean, we have the data available. The program's just not written to put them all in there and two different people and departments really work through that. So I'd have to really take it back to the team and then understand what was, you know, desired. You know, we notify per school, we let people know. We don't share whether it was a student or a teacher. You know, that's our information. And then we only report what we know if, yeah. So if we wouldn't, some of the information resides at the family level. So, but I can bring that back to see what can be done.
Can you just send me a RFI, just a note for that? And we'll get, put it in there. Member Wilson?
So actually, Member Holloman very eloquently stole all of the points I was gonna make. And I will not repeat them, other than I just want to reiterate the fact that I want to make sure that our kids continue in-person learning. And I want our staff and our families to be reassured that, hence I supported the January 15th date of at least until, or remain effective until at least January 15th, to make sure that they can at least have that reassurance that after that date, everything will be reassessed. There are COVID numbers, that reassessment will happen. And moving forward after that, we don't know, of course. But at least at this point, they will have that reassurance that they can come back to school with mitigations in place. And then may or may not change after that based on what the environment is.
Thank you. Yes.
I have, I won't make it a motion, but I would, I have a suggestion or an idea that might also improve public transparency. I think that we have a meeting on January 18th. We have two board meetings in January, the 6th and the 18th. If we were to invite a panel of medical, public health professionals to speak to the board and give a general update of what the state of Anchorage is at that moment, I think that would be informative for the board. It would be impartial. Perhaps we, well, I guess we have the first and the 15th. I'm just, I would be interested in, much like we have the ELL families. It's an agenda item, really.
So perhaps we could talk about that?
We could, we could.
Talk about that further.
But that would be a.
Maybe a work session? I'm not sure a board meeting is the right venue, but maybe a work session. And, yeah, so, yeah, we can, can we, I'd like to talk to you offline about that. Okay, let's vote. Katie, are we ready? Ms. Shaw? Yes. Thank you. Did y'all turn off your computers? Mine did. You can just.
Kelly and, or, number Lessons and number.
Okay, that passes six to one. And that brings us to, back to our agenda. There are no, oh, yeah, board member and administration comments. Committee reports and community outreach written reports. So those are attached. So, comments, any, let's start, I'm gonna start to my right today. Mr. Jacobs, feel free to say no comment. I'm joking.
I strongly consider it, Madam President, but I just want to take a moment to thank the hundreds of residents who contacted the board regarding a number of different topics, but primarily regarding COVID mitigation. I appreciate and respect anyone who's willing to engage in civic process, so thank you. And with that, I will stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Donnelly?
I remain concerned about the effacy of the enforcement of our Pledge of Allegiance policy. The policy clearly envisions that the pledge will be recited during morning announcements by the entire school. And we know for a fact that there are schools that aren't doing that and that it's being left to individual classrooms to make that decision. In at least two schools that I observed, I did not see it happening in individual classrooms. It definitely wasn't happening as the policy envisions it, school-wide. And that's very concerning because it is an existing board policy. So I believe the only way to read that policy accurately is that there would be, over the announcements, that everybody would say the pledge. And to allow schools to just avoid that by leaving it up to individual classrooms, I don't think that's what that policy calls for.
Thank you, Member Donnelly. Member Lessons?
Yeah, I have two comments. First of all, I wanted to draw the board's attention to notice from the Department of Education this week, encouraging school districts, presumably school boards, to use resources from American Rescue Plan Act to, and I quote, "To ensure that students have access to the teachers and other critical staff they need to support their success during this critical period. This includes moving quickly to implement short-term strategies while also considering longer-term investments." I remain concerned about our staffing needs. And as we begin our budget process, I'd like to have informative conversations among the board about how we can best maintain student learning. And separately, I just wanted to say that I heard that the Service High School Partners Club raised over $30,000 in the polar plunge, I'm messing this up, this past weekend. And I just think that's phenomenal. Also, services to Miss America, which, that's pretty, Miss America was our Service High School graduate. So congratulations to Service High School on both accounts.
Yes, thank you. Okay, Ms. Shaw, you have any final comments?
Yeah, I just kinda wanted to share my, like, little inside perspective about the whole masking policy mandate thing. So like, I go to South. And so from my point of view, social distancing is not really happening. I don't know if you guys, like, you know, are pushing it or enforcing, like, social distancing. But I know from South, every day during passing, there's these big crowds of kids, like, in front of the elevator, on the other side of the elevator. Most of them either have their mask below their nose or, you know, not a lot are actually wearing them properly. So I think it's either, like, social distancing needs to get pushed more if you're not gonna have masks, or if you are, like, it's either, sorry, from my point of view, it's either, like, push more social distancing without masks or have masks and leave it how it is right now. Like, both is just not a good combo. You know, no social distancing and no masks. That's kind of, you know, just how it was before COVID, which I don't think we're at that phase yet of, you know, going completely back to normal, no nothing. And I think also in the high school level, there's not a lot of enforcement about vaccines, like vaccinations. Like, I know I'm fully vaccinated, I'm getting my booster on Sunday, but it's like, I didn't know that I wasn't allowed to get the booster until my mom had to call my doctor to say it, like, can't she get it? So I think, especially for the high school level, because, you know, we're getting to that age where we can make decisions for ourselves, I just think there should be more enforcement of, well, first getting the vaccine, and then also, like, what is available? You know, which one is more preferred for teenagers? Or, you know, how old do you have to be to get the booster? Because I know you have to be 16 to get the Pfizer, I believe. And like, I genuinely didn't know that until my mom told me today. So I just think there really needs to be a bigger push on, you know, just vaccination in general. I don't know how it is at other schools, but I know South, it's just a big political thing. And that's also with the masking, is like, I'm gonna continue wearing my mask because that's just what I believe in. But I'm genuinely, like, a little nervous that I'm gonna get judged or some kids might even get bullied for wearing a mask because South, any school can be as political as it can be. But it's like, when you're more in older levels and you get your own opinions about things, it's like people judge you. So it's a big, like, concern of mine for kids who do wear a mask or don't wear a mask. It's like, either way, there's gonna be judgment that is not really needed in schools. So it's like, I don't know how you can really prevent that, but just like, I'm nervous that I'm gonna get, you know, judged on or like, oh, why are you wearing a mask? Like, there's gonna be a lot of conflict in between the two. So I just think that's something to take, to, you know, take in and consider. Is that, like, it can really damage some people. And I know that Reed Davidson, who was the first testimony, I have classes with her. She has, like, a terminal illness. So it's like, people not wearing masks could hurt her. And, you know, it affected her from not being able to go to school, which like, really hurts, makes me sad because I adore her. And she was in, she's in SAB, you know, so it can restrict her from doing those kinds of things. So I just think there's a lot of more thing, a lot of more. There's a lot more things to take in if, like, you're not having that inside of schools of how not a lot of people are wearing them correctly and there's no social distancing. And like she said, no one uses the hand sanitizers, so.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. We appreciate your perspective. It's a valuable one. And it really is a parent, vaccines are parent-driven. We do not mandate them. We make them available for those families that would like it. But it does require parental permission. Thank you. Member Wilson?
I just want to say that I really appreciate that Ms. Shaw takes the time to attend our meetings. And I, it excites me that we have a youth voice on the board. And anytime I get. And anytime I get to speak or talk to young people, I, I always enjoy the conversations, regardless of, of what their point of view is on, on things. So thank you for sharing, I really appreciate that. And I'll keep it simple, I just want to wish our staff and families happy holidays, enjoy your, your Christmas, your New Year, your whatever you choose to celebrate, so thank you for your service and, and enjoy the break.
I'll say that our student representative, Ms. Shaw's observations, for anyone that's spent serious time in a classroom, you recognize how remarkably unhygienic a place they are. To be a teacher means that you have to learn to be able to look right past some things that you would normally slack your kids over and just continue to be polite and social and do your job. If we could put them in space suits, more people would go into teaching, I think. We talked about, you know, when I was a kid, if you were going in a public pool, you had to walk through a little tray full of Clorox. It's not a bad idea still, but we're not going to go that far or do that much. I, I do think that the, having taken microbiology and evolution and a couple other things that have been irrelevant, it, it's a very complex thing to understand how organisms spread and mutate. And, and a lot of people, I think, look for very simplistic answers to it. Like, one of them is the idea that a virus is so much smaller than the mesh of a mask, and it's like, how can a mask do anything at all? And you understand, you can come to understand that, in fact, the mask is effective to a degree, it's not perfect. It's much more like a calculus equation or a, I'm blanking on the word I'm looking for, the fancy thing with the big E. It's a, it's like a derivative, much more than it is like a simple formula or algebra or math. And, and it really is difficult to understand because there are all these variables coming from different directions that you have to balance. It is part of the reason I feel like it is important for the superintendent to continue to have the authority to make the decision. I hesitate to, to push back on it because of that, but, but in this case, I think there's so many people expressing concerns and wanting that buffer about the return that, that our action was important that way. I appreciate the board supporting that. I do hope everybody has a healthy and fun break and, boy, it'd be neat if when we come back, the trend we've got right now is continuing and I hope the community will realize that they can help make that true and do things to keep their families safe and to keep their, their neighbors and everything safe and life in Anchorage becomes a lot more normal in January. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Higgins?
First of all, yeah, of course, happy holidays to everyone coming up with that and wish everybody the very best. Thank you for all the people that wrote in and spoke. There was a lot of, of feedback and I know board members were reading that, I found them interesting. I think the one that stood out the most for me, the strong emotions both ways, but this one just said, "I'm sick and tired of masks, but we got to do what we got to do." So I think that summed up how I feel about it. I'm sick and tired of the mask, true, but it doesn't alter what we've got to deal with from a science standpoint where we're at. We don't know what the next variant's going to be at, we've been told that the next one may really target kids, it may come out bad, it may, may not happen, I don't know what's going to come out of it, but whatever it is, we have to deal with it. And I'm worn out with the mask as much as anyone else within that. But I appreciate all the comments that came back, it was good. I think the part that bothers me most about the mask is how distracting it is away from discussions of, of academic outcomes. It's not good for us, it's not good for the kids, that we're not just focused on trying to improve educational outcomes, we got to deal with, with these serious safety issues, but also political issues. And so it's distracting from that, and that's probably what I most regret about the need for this discussion. But I appreciate all that feedback, strong arguments on both sides and it's good for the board to hear that, thank you.
Thank you. So Jennifer Petronas, you will be missed. Farewell to you, good luck to you. We appreciate all that you do. All right. We appreciate everybody over there in the gallery. You guys are amazing and I just want to wish you a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, whatever it is you celebrate, Kwanzaa, whatever it is. And, and do get some rest and I'm sorry, Dr. Bishop, oh, she said you guys don't have to come in till noon tomorrow. Check in with her, don't let, let her tell you that. But we, we really appreciate you guys, we appreciate the work, we know it's hard, but it, it, it really, we couldn't do what we do without you. So go into your holiday, I know you delayed the start of it because of this meeting, but it was important, it was part of our, we, we moved it from, we made some adjustments to the calendar and we landed in this week, the closure week. All right. And so with that, Dr. Bishop, did you have any final comments?
I just wanted to wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas coming up or winter break, whatever it is you're going to spend your time with, spend it well.
All right. And with that, move to, move, move to adjourn. Is there a second? There we have it. Thank you, guys.